All right, the time is now 7:02. We are ready to begin. I called the order, the December 6, 2021 Special Town Meeting of the Town of Stoughton. The meeting is now in session. This town meeting is being held via remote platform Zoom webinar due to public health concerns arising from the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation and also being recorded for future broadcasting. There's also live streaming on the SMAC's website. At this time, I ask you to please rise and stand as you are able to join me in pledging allegiance to our national flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, the full which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask you to please remain standing here if you are able. Over this year, the town has lost several beloved members of our community who have served our town in numerous ways. One very special person that I must remember is Joyce Cardino. Joyce was one of us. She was a town meeting member from Precinct 1. Joyce was also a school teacher in the Stoughton Schools having taught at the West School, now called the Wilkinson School. Joyce Cardino was not only a special person to her family, but to the rest of us. As we remember Joyce, let us also remember those that we have lost this past year. I ask now for a moment of silence. May they all rest in peace. Thank you very much. Now, at this time, I'd like to introduce our panel guests. I should also introduce myself. I'm Bob Mullin, town moderator. We have Richard Fitzgerald, deputy town moderator, and also precinct chair, precinct 3 chair. We have Lauren Goldberg, town council from KP Law. Stephanie Carrara, our town clerk. We have, excuse me, Maximanian, precinct 1 chair. George Delensky, precinct 2 chair. Julie Gito, precinct 4 chair. Carmel Drews, precinct 5 chair. Karen Clip, precinct 6 chair. Diane Dolan, precinct 7 chair. And Juan Anokian, excuse me, Dave Sheehan, precinct 8 chair. We also have Juan Anokian, the chair of the Finance Committee, and John Anzavino, deputy Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. We have Thomas Robb, superintendent of the Stoughton Schools. We have Sandra Gropey, school committee chair. Katie Pina Anokian, Vice Chair, school committee. We also have a representative from SMAC TV on here. We have Dr. Robin Grimm, our town manager. We have Joseph McChrisky, the Chair of the Select Board. We have Deborah Roberts, Vice Chair, Select Board. We have Scott Carrara, member of the Select Board. Steve Cavey, member of the Select Board. Lou Gito, member of the Select Board. We also have Mike Carroll, Chief of the Stoughton Fire Department. We have Mark Tisdale, Director of Development Services for the Town of Stoughton and the Town Engineer. We have Carolyn Campbell, Chair of Municipal Regulations Committee. We have Cynthia Walsh, Chair of the Municipal Operations Committee. We also have Agavan Schumacher, Chair of International, excuse me, International, Intergovernmental Relations Committee. And I should also say that we have Cynthia Walsh here and Phil Skeller here, both from Precinct 2, to help them with the Wi-Fi access. And also present at town hall, besides those two individuals, is Lauren Goldberg, our town council from KP Law. We have the deputy town moderator, Richard Fitzgerald, to help out the moderator here. We have Carolyn Campbell, the Chair of Municipal Regulations. We have Maximanian, the Chair of Precinct 1. And we have Trish Droffshier, Director of the IT Department here. And we have a couple other technicians here to help us out. All right, I should also say, any town meeting reps that have signed on late, if you come in late, you can let them know, don't worry, this is a private chat here, that precinct chairs let them know they have signed on. And I'll mention that a few times during the meeting. Now, obviously, as prior virtual meetings, only the panelists or town meeting reps will be able to vote. And just to kind of, when you see the poll, you know, you have 25 seconds to vote. All right, the first thing we need to do is find out who is present here. So if we can put up a poll, excuse me, a poll, and once that shows up, you're gonna just stand by for a minute. Okay, just see how the poll come up. I'm told I'm rustling papers too much. Right now, yep. Just be with us for a minute. Do you see the poll in front of you? Just click on which precinct you're from. You have 25 seconds. And then submit it.
What if we don't see a poll, Mr. Moderator?
How much time left? Okay, about five seconds left.
Mr. Moderator, I don't see a poll in front of me.
Vaughn, is it behind another screen? Do you have your Zoom? If you take your Zoom out of full screen, maybe you'll see it.
Are we in the poll? Can you get the results, please? And can we show the numbers? I'm waiting for the numbers. I don't see the numbers. Please, we're just trying to, first time through, we haven't done this in a few months, so it takes a few minutes to...
Let me make you a call.
Stop. Mr. Moderator? Mrs. Carraro?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
You don't hear him. Just stand by, Mrs. Cardino, one second here.
Yeah. Mr. Moderator?
Think he fell asleep.
Good evening, George.
How are you, Joe?
Good, thank you. I hear you've been gerrymandered.
Yeah, I've been done a lot of things.
No, your neighbor across the street told me he's in a different precinct now.
Yeah, I know. I heard that. I haven't gotten any confirmation from the town clerk or anything yet, so...
You might find out you're part of Canton now, so you know, you don't know.
Well, hey, could be worse.
Yeah.
This shamming poll thing is way out of whack.
Well, I know that because I'm trying to tell them that...
The percentage is low.
The precinct 8... The precinct 8 has no bar next to it, but it has a percentage. So there's no people... It's no, there's no people showing, but there's 12% showing as present.
Well, I'm showing 12% showing. I got 17 people out of 21 that are attending. It can't be right. That's not 12%.
Gentlemen, could you hang on, hang on for just a minute? There is some technical difficulties. The moderator's working on it. He'll be back with you shortly.
Thank you, Mark.
Vaughn, hold on a second. I'll get back to you. All right, just stay on this line. This is crazy. Yes. Yes.
And I'm back. Can you hear me?
Can you see the mark?
Precinct 1 has 15. Precinct 2, 17. Town clerk, would you like to read these for me?
Yes.
Okay, I might have Stephanie, the town clerk, read the numbers, the precinct counts.
Mr. Moderator, precinct 1 has a total of 15. Precinct 2, 17. Precinct 3 is 20. Precinct 4, we had a rep that couldn't do the poll. He let us know, so that precinct 4 will be 18. Precinct 5 is 19. Precinct 6, we had someone else that couldn't get in, so we added that person. So number 6, precinct 6 is 18. Precinct 7 is 10. Precinct 8 is 16, for a total of, we have 117 town meeting reps.
And our quorum needs?
89.
So our quorum tonight is 89? Or 85?
I'm sorry, 85.
85. Okay, we have a, our quorum needs are 85. We have a quorum to proceed to a virtual town meeting. Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. Okay, the first order of business is ever vote on the remote, the use of the remote town meeting platform.
The deputy moderator has a question.
Stand by.
We have them, because we're co-hosts.
Okay, wait a minute. Hang on, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. The question was, how do we arrive at those numbers of the quorum count? Right, we put a poll out there.
Put a poll, and it shows percentages. However, I are co-hosts, so we get the numbers, and I read the numbers to him.
All right, I still have to do, wait a minute, ladies and gentlemen, but it's out there. We need to, now, obviously, the first night of virtual town meeting is always similar to this. We're getting through a couple of bugs. We haven't done this, we don't do this every night. So what we're gonna do is... Yeah. We're not gonna do this poll yet. Okay, first, I'd like to have a motion on the use of remote town meeting platform. Can I have a good motion? That was Cynthia Walsh, seconded by Maximanian. All right? Okay, all those, please vote accordingly. This is the whole, you see the poll before you, motion the whole special town meeting virtually, so we can proceed. Hope that the meeting chooses to take the business, virtual format, and the business Okay, how much time? All set? Okay, let's close the poll. And town clerk, could you read the tally?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Yes, 126. No, 4.
Thank you, Stephanie. Right now, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the procedural motions that are on the virtual table.
Oh, made.
Is there a second? Okay, Carolyn Campbell made that motion, seconded by Maximanian. And once we're ready to put that poll up, we can vote on that poll.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Carrara.
Point of information?
Yes.
There was 117 reps. And then we just had 126, 4, and 3.
All right. We will double-check that number, Mr. Carrara. Yeah, some could have joined later, coming in.
If you add all the numbers per precinct that were written or read, the total is 133, not 117, which is what you just came in for a vote of total of 133. At least, when I add up the individual precinct numbers that were given for attendance, I have a total of 133, not 117.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anzavino.
Sorry about that, but I just...
That's okay. No, that's good. We're trying to work the bugs out early in the process here. So as we go into other polls and numbers, we're accurate. That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Carrara, and thank you, Mr. Anzavino. Okay, now, we had the results of the special town meeting virtual poll. Stephanie Carrara, could you read the results of that one more time? The virtual town meeting? The whole, the motion virtually, just so we're clear on that.
I apologize for that. We missed precinct 8, which had 16, totaling our precinct reps to the 133.
And also, I should just mention, the whole, the meeting virtually is 126, yes, well, no, 3 abstentions for 133. Thank you. Now, we're gonna... All right, okay, I've been notified there's some hands up. Who was up first? Okay, can we bring Mr. Scott Dino in? He's a point of order. When you're in, Mr. Scott Dino, please identify yourself, name and... Can we bring Mr. Scott Dino in?
That, I was responding about 10 minutes ago to a poll that issue is no longer valid, it's moot.
Okay, thank you. It's been a while to get to you, but I'm trying to work the bug there. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, any other hands up? Mr. George Delensky. Can you unmute yourself, sir? You're on the panel.
Yes, sir, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to make a correction on the precinct 2 attendance. I showed 19 as being attending.
Okay, people are coming in. I thank you very much, Mr. Delensky. We appreciate that. Thank you for that information and your comments. Can you lower your hand, please? Thank you. Very good. Anybody else's hands up? I see two hands up somewhere. Okay, we, Linda Garten. And Linda, when you come in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Linda Garten, precinct 6. Is it possible that we can make sure we see the list of people's hands that are raised and also the results of the polls?
Okay, did you not see the results of the polls?
No, I did not.
Okay, we'll see if we can rectify that. People's hands being raised, I believe that should be available. Okay, one, okay. Linda, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Can we... And then, we, Mr.... And Mr. Truffil, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number.
Just, Ed Truffil, precinct 5.
Name?
Precinct 5, FinCom member. Just want to make sure that you can hear me, because I haven't checked in. It's just a test.
All right, thank you. We hear you loud and clear. Thank you. All right. Up and told Sylvia Whiting, when we bring in Sylvia Whiting, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Unmute. Hello?
Yes, Sylvia, go ahead.
I can't see anything. I can see you, but I can't, I can't see any list of attendees or anything else. So I don't know if that's, everyone is in the same position.
Yeah, right now, you only can see me. Apologize to that, but...
I don't see any list of any attendees or anything like we did on the previous sessions last year.
Yeah. One second, please. Was that Trish? Hold, once we, here, have the PowerPoint screen brought up and the presentation of speakers, all that information will be available on the screen. So just be with us just a moment, as I mentioned before, it takes, it's a little rusty at this. It's one thing to have a small meeting, I'm not big on any size of meetings, but when you have a large meeting like this, there's a lot of action, a lot of pieces going into it. So just be with us a little bit. Make sure I don't ruffle the pages in front of everybody here. I just want to revert to the order of the business now. And I gotta just mention a couple things. Obviously, the raise hand is used for requesting to speak on the Zoom. And a Q and A is used for points of order. We do have people monitoring both. Q and A, Carolyn Campbell monitoring that. And raise hand, I have Maximanian. And also, once we get moving, you should be able to see people raising their hand, the queue, the speaker queue list there. And also, I have to let you know that, remember, any information that you put on the chat with Zoom webinar is part of the record. So number one, be kind to the town moderator. Don't say anything bad about me, because I read that, I can read that later. And also, just remember, it is part of the record, so, you know, be polite to each other. I'm not present to pass any judgment on any article or person here, but I'm only trying to run an orderly, efficient, and fair town meeting, to the best of my ability, in what I would call difficult circumstances. Running a virtual meeting with this number of people is definitely challenging. All right, so, right now... Yeah, I'm told I'm ruffling too many pages, I try to cut back on that. And I actually asked the town clerk, she has an announcement she wants to make, so Stephanie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For those who don't know me, I'm Stephanie Carrara, I'm your town clerk, and I'm the election official for the Town of Stoughton. Every 10 years, we have to redistrict the town, so everybody has to pull papers who wants to run for town meeting rep. And how it will work is the first, the top seven, excuse me, the top seven get the three-year seat, the next seven get the two-year seat, and the next seven will get the one-year seat. This happens every 10 years with the redistricting. I am going to, where COVID is happening, and it's getting a little dicey, I'm gonna be working with the town manager to have a meeting with her to go over if we can have a night where people can come in to sign papers, like we did last year. So we plan on doing something like that in January, but I need to discuss it with the town manager first. But please, please, please come in. You do have till February 15, I believe, to pull the papers and get them into our office by 5 o'clock that night. If anyone has any questions, as always, you can call me. 781-232-9224 is my direct line, or you can talk to my assistant, Kelly Johnson, or my senior clerk, Samantha Rego, and we will be glad to help you out any way we can. Thank you.
Stephanie, I appreciate those comments. All right, let's move on. Do I hear any, see any hands raised? Okay, Joseph Soares, let's bring Mr. Soares. And Joseph, when you're brought in, please state your name and, please. His hand went. Move on. Next up is George Delensky. Mr. Delensky, please state your name and precinct number again.
George Delensky, precinct 2. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the town clerk. I understand there's been some redistricting. How are we gonna know if we pull papers, where our precinct actually lies? I have not seen any information on that, and there's a lot of rumors being spread.
All right. Mr. Delensky, I'll allow one, obviously, it's important to the town meeting room, so if we can't go into that too much, we'll have a quick explanation by the town clerk. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Because of COVID, things got delayed. Normally, these are all in order by September of the year that the town and cities are being redistricted. Because of COVID, the date will be December 31. That's when everything has to be into the state. Now, as I've said to people that have already come in to pull their papers, once we know, we will contact those people to say, hey, you know what, you're in a different precinct, or you know what, you need a couple more, because you got some that used to be in your precinct and they're not anymore. It's December 31, that's the state, I, my hands are tied on that, but I urge everybody to come in and pull their papers. I'm not expecting a lot of shifts, and I can go over what I've submitted, and I'll be more than glad, just make an appointment with me, and I'll be more than glad to spend some time with you, Mr. Delensky, and go over all the information that you'll need. And I will do that for any town meeting member.
Please, Stephanie Carrara. Okay, Judge?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, I don't see any more hands raised. Are we all in agreement? Well, that's fine, but no, 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 we need to move on. All right. All right, let me see. Okay, so let's move to the first article. That's Article 1, the fire station. It appears on page 1 of your warrant books. All right, and we're just gonna bring up the PowerPoint. And can we have a motion? And the motion's gonna be read by town manager, Dr. Robin Grimm.
Thank you. The motion, the motion for Article 1, that the town moved to appropriate the sum of $27,300, excuse me, up to $27,300,000 to construct and furnish a new fire station to be located on a parcel or parcels of Atlanta, identified as 400 Prospect Street in Stoughton, Massachusetts. Renovate, restore, reconstruct, and furnish the current firehouse located on Freeman Street in said town as a fire department headquarters and emergency operations center, and modify office and living quarters in the firehouse located on Central Street in said town. And for all these projects, for professional engineering, architectural services, design, site preparation, demolition, installation, and all other incidental and related costs, and further to authorize the Select Board on such terms... and further to authorize a select board on such terms and conditions as the board deem appropriate to acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain the parcel or parcels of land identified as 400 Prospect Street in said town, and such temporary or permanent easements as may be needed to carry out these projects, and as funding therefore to authorize the treasurer with the approval to select board to borrow said sum under and pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section Seven, or any, or, or any other enabling authority, and further that any premium received upon sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. Provided, however, the vote taken hereunder shall not preclude the Community Preservation Committee from recommending nor the town meeting for then appropriate community preservation funds for eligible projects, expenses to preserve, restore, and renovate the historic Freeman Street Firehouse, including the construction of an appropriate museum-quality bay for displaying the historic fire truck, and further provided that the town, town meeting appropriate such funds prior to borrowing the full amount authorized hereunder, said appropriation shall reduce accordingly the amount to be repaid from the general fund, and provided further that this vote shall be directly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called debt exclusion, allowing 65% of the principal and interest on the bonds to be raised outside the levy limit. And that is the amended version, Mr. Ma.
Much? Everything on that? Okay, I have a second.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Who's, who's requesting?
This is Mr. Anzavino.
Okay, Mr. Anzavino.
Yeah. Can you tell me when you received this?
Uh, this afternoon.
Because when I went on to check the, uh, virtual table at quarter of one, this was not on there, and I thought your rule said everything had to be in by noon.
I will let the town council respond to that.
Mr. Ma, moderator, thank you. Um, it's my understanding that the motion, uh, was already in your hands prior to that, and there was just a few words that were changed. And also, I would just remind you as well that you have discretion to make that decision if you think it's appropriate.
It's time I think it's appropriate. So we're gonna move forward because it's important to the town.
And you don't believe this expanded the scope with all the different, um, funding sources and so forth, which were never in there before? When did the selectmen vote to do all these?
It's still $27 million. It's not, I believe it's not really.
They added eminent domain in here, which was never part of any of the discussions during the course of any hearings or up until this point. So I would, I'd like to know when the board voted to change what they had already voted, how they were gonna do this article. Because it raises the issue of whether this is properly before us or not.
All right, Mr. Anzavino, give me a moment. Let me ask.
I just wanted to explain what I was looking at. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, no problem. Let me, uh, have town council explain. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, through you, um, this, uh, language, the language that relates to eminent domain is always recommended with regard to, uh, requesting, or, or, I'm sorry, acquiring any real estate. Um, it allows us, especially with respect to easements, to make sure that there's no, um, issues with the title. And there's no appropriation today in any event for the eminent domain portion of this, so it's, um, kind of theoretical at this stage.
You have it. Thank you, town council. All right, we're gonna move on. Okay, let me just say, for the record, it was seconded by
Lou Gieto, actually.
Mr. Fitzgerald, I believe. Was Lou Gieto second or two? Okay, Lou, that's for the record, Lou Gieto second in the motion on the fire station. Thank you all. All right. Uh, who's up? Who raised their hand for Mr. Rick Hill? Okay, bring in Rick Hill. And Mr. Hill, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Hill. And, um, I'm really just responding to text advisory. When I said that I didn't have audio and video, um, they said I need to, uh, raise my hand to get access.
Okay, uh, you haven't, you have, uh, audio now, obviously.
Well, just because you activated it by recognizing me.
Okay, you weren't getting audio before?
No, I don't have icons for, all right. Well, now I have a mute, uh, which I didn't have before, but, um, I don't have a camera, I guess. Video.
Can you have your, yeah? Standby, let me, um, I need the help desk behind me. Hang on. Okay, for all the town meeting reps out there, this is Zoom webinar. Um, if you're not on the panel, you will not have video. But you should have audio. And when you're brought in as a panelist to speak, when you raise your hand, you'd be, if we, if things don't get a little too busy here, we'll bring people in as they raise their hands, and they'll be able to see some video there. Uh, but once we get put back to the town meeting rep, uh, to, to town meeting representative area, you lose the video access. It's Zoom webinar. You don't have the total functionality as you do when you're in the panel. Okay, hopefully that explains everything.
It does. Thanks, Mr. Moderator.
You, Mr. Hill. We're trying to do the best we can. I know it's not perfect tonight. It takes a little time to get rolling here. We haven't done this in a long time. Uh, we have done it in the past, but it's been last May that we did this. We're a little rusty here. All right, so we're gonna move on. Uh, so I got a motion, and we got the second, and we got the explanation of the motion in here. All right, so now we're gonna move forward with a presentation. Uh, excuse me, hang on, I need to, uh, have the finance committee read their report. Mr. Von Anokian, can you read the finance committee report?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, sir.
The vote to approve this article failed two to 12 to one. The finance committee then voted 15 to zero to add this note. The committee supports the project concept, but has concerns about the property, funding methods, and the bundling of multiple projects in one article. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Next up is Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Do we have Agavan Schumacher, Schumacher out there?
Yes, you do.
Go ahead and read your report, please, Agavan.
The Intergovernmental Relations Committee voted six to one to recommend Article One to special town meeting. Um, with the following statement, there are, there are no perfect solutions, but the immediate need of town residents for a fire station outweighs our concerns regarding financing.
Thank you very much, Agavan. Next up is Municipal Operations. Cynthia Walsh, could you read your, your, your report there?
Municipal Operations Committee voted five to zero to unanimously approve recommending this article to town meeting.
Okay, now we're gonna proceed for, to a presentation, but before we do that, I just want to remind everybody. As we've done, done this in the past back in May, we have the presentation followed by technical questions. And also, then we have a pro and con debate. Everybody has five minutes for a pro and con debate. Uh, you can make motions in the pro and con debate. And then we have a summary by the presenter for five minutes after that. The presentation will be no more than 15 minutes. So at this time, we're gonna proceed to the presentation for the fire station. So at this point, I'm gonna call on, I believe, Dr. Grim, whoever you have doing the presentation. Go ahead, please.
Uh, actually, Mr. Moderator, I believe the Chairman McCrisky was going to say a few words first.
Oh, yes, I, I apologize, Mr. McCrisky. Um, he's appointed personal privilege. Go ahead, go ahead, Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and, uh, members of town meeting. Uh, thank you for, for being here tonight and being willing to give of your time, uh, to deal with some of these issues that come before the town. Uh, as many of you well know, uh, this is vetted by all ends with the Board of Selectmen, Town Department heads, uh, as well as consultants that we have available to us, legal counsel, as well as our town meeting committees. And I would ask that you just pay attention to the issues and, and keep an open mind. As, uh, this was towards the end a confusing process for some of us, uh, and, uh, the, the issues there, you may hear some new arguments tonight, some new information, uh, or something that, uh, just doesn't agree with some of the committees that heard that, uh. This has been vetted. We believe it's a good project. It's a workable project. It's affordable to the taxpayers. And we would hope that you consider, uh, reviewing these articles, you know, the best you can, and supporting the articles for the good of the town. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we have a, um, raise hand, point of order. Sandra Souza, can we bring in Sandra Souza, please? And Sandra, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Hello?
Sandra, name and precinct number, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go right ahead.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. Sandra Souza, Precinct One. Uh, I just had, I don't know if this is the time for my question. I had, um, a particular question about, um, the finance committee vote. Should I hold that off?
Uh, your question regarding the finance committee vote? Yes, you should hold that off.
Okay. I'll, I'll wait for the technical questions then. Thank you.
It's time I interrupt everybody. I apologize, but we have Congressman, our Congressman Stephen Lynch available here. He obviously is, he's pressed for time, and I, I'd like to bring him in right now. And Congressman, welcome to the town of Stoughton Special Town Meeting. I hope you can hear us.
I, I can. Uh, can you hear me, Bob?
Yes, we can, Congressman. Go right ahead, sir.
You know what? Here's what I think. You're into this already. Um, why don't I, why don't I, uh, postpone my remarks till the next, uh, town meeting? I think it's more important to engage in the substantive issues. I read the, I read the, uh, warrants, and I know you've got some contentious issues here. So I just want to say, I'm, I'm, there was one question on redistricting. We are reassured on all the maps that, uh, that I will continue to be, uh, representing, uh, the town of Stoughton up until the next election. Uh, so, uh, that part of resist, redistricting is actually resolved. I realize the state and precincts still need to be worked out, but, uh, it's an honor for me to represent the town of Stoughton, and, uh, thank you all for being involved in, in town meeting, and I'll yield back my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. It's an honor to have you as our Congressman also. Thank you so much. Uh, okay, we will, uh, go back to Article One, the fire station. Uh, I believe now it's time for the presentation. Dr. Grim?
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna ask, uh, that a short video be posted to give a little bit of an overview of this project, and then I'll follow up with a brief presentation within my timeframe, I promise. And, um, so Trish, if you could, put that video up for us.
Yep, it's coming right now. Yep. I don't hear any sound. Do you? Do you, because it cuts your, have your headphones on maybe or something? Why isn't there any sound?
Trish, it's Christian. Um, if you stop the screen share and then reshare, close the screen share, and then once you click on Share Screen, um, at the bottom of the Share Screen, note button, there are a box, there'll be a little note button that says Share Sound. You have to click that.
Okay, Tyler's doing it right now.
Cool.
There's a lot of critical gaps with the, uh, emergency services, fire EMS, um, for the town. And, and the reason is this. This building was built back in 19, it finished open in 1926. So it's approaching 100 years old.
Notice the pots and pans in the kitchen. These aren't for cooking. That's for when it rains out, that catches the water.
It's good, you know, this, this equipment works, but it's, uh, just not functional the way it's, it's just stuck in here. It's pushed in here. This is where we keep all our, um, extra hose, and it's kind of just stuffed in the back here. We, we don't have, you know, proper spacing and storage for it.
This used to be the office for the chief's assistant. Right now, uh, we store all of our EMS equipment here, our, uh, our oxygen mask, banding, uh, equipment, advanced life support equipment, medications.
And I'll talk a little bit more about why time makes a difference. So if you can think four minutes, four minutes is kind of that, that time that they, they use as a standard as the body starts to shut down. Now, as the body shuts down, the body tries to protect the most main organ, and which is the brain. The brain has six minutes, and, and once you get beyond that, it's very, very, very difficult to resuscitate. For us to respond properly and, and, and to help the community, we have to be in the best condition we can be in. We have to be in the best situation. We have, like. You're really not supposed to have your gear right where the apparatus are, but, I mean.
They're spitting out diesel films, and they're sitting on all the, I mean, everything, where our water is that we drink. You know, there's diesel films settling on that stuff. Um, with the newer fire stations, uh, we saw this in COVID. Crews that would come back from calls where they were taking care of COVID-positive patients could have a transition area where they could change uniforms, uh, shower if they needed to. This also applies to fighting fires as well. Uh, you come in from a fire, um, and you're, you're carrying the products of combustion on your skin, on your clothes, and you need to get out of those. You need to shower, you need to wash, you need to change, and get a clean uniform on. Um, so with the new station, with the new concept, you're gonna be able to transition from the apparatus floor, which is not a clean area, into the station living quarters, which are considered a clean environment for the crews to live.
Yes, the fire department, the members, need a new fire station because we're really working out of some really horrible conditions. The critical gap is that also Stoughton, the demographics and, and, and the population has, has really grown. We know that the town is building. And, and, and so we have to grow with it. You have to build your infrastructure. You can't try to play catch-up. You're going to cause, um, you're gonna have a critical gap in, in emergency response. We've got, uh, 400 Prospect Street, the old American Legion, which is an abandoned, uh, building at this time, and Chief, could that work? I love that area. You know, it, it drops us right all over the Prospect, but we can right, get right on Route 27 North, I mean, South, we can get Route 27, we can get down to the center real quick. We get on Prospect Street. We have to protect the highway. We, we are responsible for a good portion of that highway. So it gives us easy access. I just want to put an operational fire station in a good location that fits the needs and the future needs. And then I just need a place, I don't want to lose this gun. I need a place for administration so I can make station two a, a better operational station.
I, I think also the plan to incorporate to still have this station, rehabilitate it into a administrative building, a public health building, as well as a, uh, training area and an EOC for the town. It's gonna serve us very well. So, uh, uh, you know, it's the classic firehouse with the long table, the big room. It's got a pole to slide down for calls. Uh, but it's just outgrown. We've outgrown it. And I think the new station's gonna provide the room we need, not only to accommodate what we have, but to grow in the future as well.
We have really, I mean, I know everybody knows we have no parking downtown. We're gonna take off the two bays. You know, if you're facing the building, the two bays to the left. We, we work day shifts unless there's a storm or unless there's, you know, a fire or something big going on, so you'd have parking for weekends and nights, um, for the town. You know, we try to interact with the kids as they come in. People stop by, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's important for us, for the community to know us because we don't want the first time we meet you is at your worst time, which is, you know, typically any emergency is gonna be your worst time. We don't want to be, try to build that relationship then. It's really difficult, so, um, you know, to try to blend into a neighborhood, be friendly neighbors. I welcome questions. I welcome people to come up and visit me at 15. I welcome questions, I welcome people to come up and visit me at 1550 Central Street. Ask me what you want to have, and I'm going to be absolutely transparent, and if I don't have the answer, I'll get it for you.
Thank you. And so now I'd like to continue with a brief presentation on this. We good?
Hey, Robin. What time do we have remaining? About five minutes.
Beautiful, thank you. So I'm really excited to be here tonight. This is a project I'm extremely proud of, and I'm proud of the team that's worked together to pull this together for you. About seven months ago, six or seven months ago, the Select Board under Chairman McChrisky tasked me with putting together a group to bring something forward to town meeting that could sustain growth in this town for 50 years and could serve the public in a financially proven way. And I'm really excited tonight to do, to present this, because I believe that that's what we've been able to do. And tonight we're asking you to vote on this project and to vote to move it forward, if you will, for a special election referendum, so that everybody in the town gets a chance and an opportunity to vote on this project. So again, tonight's vote would be to move it forward for a referendum, which likely would be a late January, early February vote. I want to thank our staff team members, many of you know all the people around the table, I don't want to take too much time. And we have our professional team as well, our owner's project manager, Palmer Associates, Doran Whittier, who are our architects. And I also want to include Cinder McInerney of Hilltop Financial. She's not with us this evening, but Cinder and her group has been our advisor financially for this whole project throughout. They were also the group that put together our school, our high school financing project way back. So we've worked with them for a long time, and Cinder's been extraordinarily helpful. As you know, the goals of this were to provide state-of-the-art fire services, infrastructure with optimal response times, modern operational facilities, and basically accommodate 50 years of growth in Stoughton. We'd already taken into account programming needs that were established over the past several years. And generally, I think the chief hit it on the head, and the video hit it on the head. I don't need to talk about the fact that we need a new fire station. Freeman Street, if you watch that video, is clearly underperforming as a fire station. What we primarily needed to look at was where we could get optimal operation times, response times. One of the issues we have is that all of our ambulance service right now is out of the center of town. Station Two cannot accommodate the second ambulance, we don't have proper dormitory space because the headquarters is there. Consequently, headquarters needs to move out of Station Two, so that we can appropriately put an ambulance there, which was the original plan. If we put an ambulance there, ideally, another ambulance should go at the proposed area that we're looking at, which is perfectly diagonally across town. Again, I'm not going to go into detail on the need for the Freeman Street Fire Station, and you can follow throughout PowerPoint. But what I want to talk about quickly is the first part of the project, which is 400 Prospect Street. We went out to bid, this property came back along with one other as appropriate in size and scope, they fit the optimal needs, they were considered optimal properties, and this was the cheapest one by several hundred thousand dollars on the vote. We have had surveyed the property, we have no hazmat issues, we do not have wetlands issues in the area that we would be building, and the appraised value came back after than $70,000. So the $1.15 million bid is appropriate for an appraised property of $1.080 million. This would be an operational fire station only, and one of the reasons we went with the option of doing this as operational and not putting headquarters in it, is that new construction cost is far more expensive than renovation of Freeman Street to office space. Renovating Freeman Street for a new fire station is unwieldy, but renovating it for office space and museum space is far more affordable. This particular project we're putting in front of you is about $4 million less than if we went for one building with a headquarters included. And that includes all of the bundling of these projects. The reason, by the way, they are bundled, is they are all necessary for the other to happen. So it's not that they can be parsed out. 400 Prospect Street will be an operational station with bays large enough to accommodate equipment today and in the future, and enough, and enough equipment as well. Generally, the fire chief has expressed information on response times, and anybody who has questions on that, he will address along with the Assistant Chief, Jack Maycomber, if you have questions there. The second part of the project is the rehabilitation of Freeman Street. Again, there's sort of an emotional feel and historic fabric to that building. If we were to sell that parcel, people would say, well, why don't we sell it? It really does not bring much value, and likely the building would end up demolished.
Robin, Robin, this is the moderator. Time's up. Thank you. Article One, take a few comments there, Robin. Next up is, we have a raised hand from Jim Garren. Can we bring in Mr. Garren? Sandra Souza, I'm sorry, you're, you have a technical question on the fire station?
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yeah, well, I want to know, is it a point of order on the fire station or a technical question?
Well, I believe it would be a technical question I had for the Finance Committee. When, on your vote, I wanted to know what their concern, they had, they had, they had voted to not approve it based on concerns about the property, and I wanted to know what their concerns about the property were.
Okay, before we get into that.
Okay.
I have to apologize.
It's okay.
On the list here, Johnny Zavino is first on the list, he sent me an email. No, no. Full transparency, out of my guidelines that I sent out. Johnny Zavino was the first in, sent me an email, followed by Cameron Clip, and then Sandra Souza would be up third, okay? Everybody, I won't let anybody call the question, we're not going to call the question anyways during technical questions. So first up is Mr. Johnny Zavino. If you can state your name and precinct number.
Yes, Johnny Zavino.
Questions, please?
Yes, Johnny Zavino, precinct four, and I know you have a time limit on these four. So I want to ask the questions and then let them answer them. I don't want answers to be taking up the time for me to just ask the questions. And I'll reduce the number of questions, because I have...
Yeah, you're going to be, yeah, John, just in fairness to everybody else, you know, how about we just say no more than five questions?
Yeah, no, that's fine, I say I'm going to reduce them, because I did...
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, my, my first question, not necessarily the top concern, but my first question is, request for quotes for a survey of this property was issued on July 22nd, and it was due in by the 30th. And it was actually received, signed off on July 25th. And the RFP for this particular property was signed on the 29th, which should have been opened on the 30th. And the review of this proposal was not completed, and the recommendation to use this property was not made until August 9th. So the question would be, how are we asking for a survey on a property that wasn't even recommended until August 9th? That's my first question. I had a question with the RFP itself, was being signed by an individual, but the property is owned by an LLC, and the RFP clearly states various entities have various requirements for who signs off on this. So I'm just curious how the RFP was accepted from an individual when the property is owned by an LLC. I want, and this is a yes or no question, I'm just curious if the criminal investigation into the sale of the property has been completed, I know it's been out there for a couple of months, and would that have an adverse effect with bond counsel reviewing this? And my last one would simply be, why wasn't a 21E required of the, on the proposal rather than the town having to do it to pay for the 21E itself? And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Ben Zavino, we'll see if we can get those answered for you. All right. Robin, would you like to answer some of those, what you can, or do you want to ask...
Sure, I'm very happy to answer the first one. There was no survey procured. We went out for quote to determine how much a survey would cost on that property. When we became aware that that may be one of the properties bid on, it's a complicated property with multiple lots, we knew that even the other potential property that might bid would be far less complicated. So any survey that would have to happen would likely be more expensive for this, we wanted a sense of what the cost would be if this was to happen. We were also very familiar with the potential other property that likely would bid, as it had been bid on, as they actually put in a bid before, for an earlier proposal likely back in launch. So we didn't, we procured nothing. We were trying to ascertain what a cost would be for a survey if this particular property came in, because we did know that it was six parcels. And so we went with what we thought would be the more of the expensive quotes to get a sense of what type of financial commitment would be involved. There was no commitment to do a survey, there was no preconceived notion that this would be the property that would get the bid. It was simply an effort to be prepared so that we could move as quickly as possible on whichever property might have been awarded the bid. This property was reviewed equally to the other properties that came in, and had the other properties come in at a level price, and optimal, they would have been the property The second question is Fran Lunt.
Hi, I'm Fran, I'm the procurement officer of the Town of Stoughton. The proposer did submit the proposal on the due date, and he's, I'm assuming he signed the paperwork the day before. So he filled out his paperwork on, I believe that they were due on the 30th, so he signed it on the 29th. So that's not uncommon on any procurement, people typically fill it out before they do. And then he did sign, the property owner did sign the forms in his name, and we did reach out to town council, and we got a letter of clarification from the owner. And the clarification didn't change the substance of the bid, it just changed the clarification. He was signing on behalf of the LLC, and he was the owner, manager of that LLC. So it was just a clarification.
In question to criminal investigation, there is no criminal investigation regarding the bidder. Any criminal investigation regarding anybody else involved who's been two owners ago is frankly not the curfew of this town meeting. I have spoken with the police chief to confirm that there is no criminal investigation involving the person we're dealing with, and frankly, innuendo to that leaves the town open for liability. I also confirmed with our attorneys that we have no right based on hearsay or innuendo to not consider a bid, and that would actually open the town up to liability, given that this bid was equal or better than the other proposal that came in, and actually came in at a lower cost. Hearsay and innuendo are not reasons to not move a bid forward, and in fact, open the town up for liability. And regarding bond counsel, I've been told that bond counsel is aware of this project, and there is no concern about that.
Robin, there's one more, one more question about the 21E.
Which, what was that?
There's one more question, I believe, about... Ben Zavino, could you restate your last question on the 21E issue?
I, the question on the 21E was just, why wasn't that required of the proposer instead, opposed to having the town pick up the cost to do it?
Right, because the challenge is that if we require that of bidders, we actually get less bidders, because people are not going to invest money in a survey if they don't know that they have a buyer. So, given that we've gone out to bid several times on this property, we were afraid that we would not have people bid if there was an upfront cost with no notion that they would get.
That was in our article, like, we did allow $20,000 for the survey.
Right. And that was, yeah, that was in the original article that came in on this, there was $20,000 allowed for surveys, part of the original feasibility study.
It's not typically part of the article.
Okay.
I think that answers it.
Go ahead, thanks if you guys jump in.
Yeah, I think that answered Ben Zavino's question.
And our history has been that we have paid for these in the past.
Okay, to Dr. Grimm. All right, we're going to move on, next up is Karen Clip. Do you have a question, Karen?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I did talk to the town engineer, he responded back to me through the town manager, I was curious about the hazardous inspection. There's an oil tank on the property. Can we have that put in the purchase and sell agreement that the seller has to remove the price of purchasing?
Okay, I can answer that question, just moderator.
Go ahead, sir, please.
I'm not an attorney, but I think it's pretty common that you can roll that type of service into your purchase and sales, it's contingent upon it being complete. Since that tank was evaluated and it was not leaking, it shouldn't be much of an issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Point of information?
Point of order?
Yep.
Point of order, go ahead, Scott Carrera is the point of order.
Under Massachusetts law, all USTs, underground storage tanks, have to be removed prior to the sale. The fire chief knows that, Assistant Fire Chief Jack Maycomber knows that, he can tell you it's under CMR, I can't remember what actual law it is, but it is preponderance upon the seller to remove it. He is the generator of origin, he purchased the property with it on site. We should not be rubbing this off, saying that, oh, we tested it, it's not leaking. That's not the problem. The problem is, it's not our problem.
Mr. Carrera, wait a minute, you made a point of order, you know, you're getting into your opinion here. I agree.
Not an opinion, I'm giving you a law, Bob. It has to be removed, like any other property.
Scott, excuse me, you're so sad at that, I hear, I hear you. So it's under law. Thank you. Right now, why I ask Karen, because you can talk, she also sent me an email. People sent me emails over the weekend. That's what, and we're done with the email list. Okay, next up, Sandra Souza. Can we bring Sandra Souza back in?
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, go ahead, Sandra.
Okay. I'll go back to my question from before, I believe it is a technical question. I want to go back to the Finance Committee vote, that they said that they did not, that they supported the project but had concerns about the property. I would like to know what their concerns about the property were. Thank you.
To the Finance Committee Chair, could you answer that? Or anybody?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Well, we, we took a general vote that we supported the project concept, but had problems with the property, funding methods and bundling. So during the discussion of the meeting, there are a multitude of property issues that were discussed, some of them were as far as wetland, people didn't want a repeat of a Station Two problem, it was in the woods was some of the other discussion, also response time down at the southwest Stoughton was over eight minutes. If I remember correctly, there was also discussion about the narrow driveway, not a lot of street frontage, those types of property discussions. I mean, I could look up more notes, but off the top of my head, that's what the discussion was, the concerns with the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Sandra?
No, I just wanted more specifics on what, what their concerns were. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it was also no appraisal on the property, that was the other, one of the other issues.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you both. Next up is Jim Garren. Can we bring in Mr. Garren? And Mr. Garren, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Mr. Moderator, Jim Garren, precinct six. The town manager up with a revised motion, shouldn't we have voted on that revised motion before we started discussions on this article?
I'll, I'll hustle the way in on that, please.
Mr. Moderator, I can talk to the help area about getting that, that vote taken, because obviously it was forgotten to take the actual count.
Let's table this for the time being. Do I need a motion to table? Got to get, and we're going to proceed to take the amended motion. Motion to table was made by Max Manion, second by Carolyn Campbell. All right, we need to take a vote on that table. If we can clear the raised hands. All those, if I can, I believe the hands are raised, excuse me, cleared? Okay, all those in favor?
Mr. Moderator, point of order? What are we voting on?
Okay, we are voting on to table the action before us right now, so we can go back and vote on the amended motion, to accept this amended motion.
Thank you.
That's all we're doing, just a procedural type of effort here. Because the town moderator doesn't make mistakes, but, you know, he overlooked this one a little bit. So we're going to go ahead and do this. All right, so that's the, the motion is to table the action before us, so we can go back and vote the amended motion. So all those in favor of table, and please raise your hand. Yeah, can we get a count of the raised hands? Do we have a count on the raised hands?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we ask technicians to lower their hands, please? Can we ask technicians to lower their hands, please? This is the vote on tabling. Once they, once they get it clear, I'll clear that the hands are down. Please, don't raise your hand yet. Are we clear?
Yes.
All right, all those who oppose, raise your hand now. Do we have a count on the raised hands?
Yes.
All right, clear the hands, we'll take the abstentions, just to be safe. Are the hands cleared? All those abstaining, please raise your hand now. Okay, can we get a count, it's still, they're still coming? All right. And I'll have the town clerk. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator? I have yes, 96, no, 6, abstentions, 5, and I've confirmed that.
What motion are we making on motion? Yep. Yep, I need some technical analysis here from the town council, one minute, please. I'm told there's a little clerical error on the account. It's one, for yes, it's 110, no, 8, abstentions, 5. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, and I want the people at home to understand that because this is a shared screen, some of my information on my screen is cut off. So I were triple checking this, and two of us came up with the 96, one of us came up with the 110. We reviewed it, and it is the 110, 8, and 5.
Okay. Mr. Garren, can I ask you, along with the one before us, and what, could you just rephrase what you wanted us to do? I mean, we had a little bit of a conference here with town council. I'm going to have town council weigh in on this.
Mr. Moderator, thank you, through you. My understanding is that the intent of that motion was to put this question on the table so that a vote can be taken on the amendment. And after discussing it here, we feel quite confident that the full discussion should occur, and then we'll vote on the amendment, and then if that fails, we would vote on the original motion as it appeared in the, in the finance committee's report.
Okay, everybody's clear on that? Okay, so we're going to proceed for discussion, okay? Are we going to take it back off the table? Can I get a motion to take it off the table? The discussion?
Take her off the table?
Yeah.
Just a second.
It, it, yep. Just a mistake, okay? Just an error, procedural issue. All right, is there any objection if we take it off the table? Those hands raised, objecting?
What are we doing?
Okay, I'm just getting clarification. The town council is trying to clarify this. There's a misunderstanding of everything going on here. We are talking, we are, we are moving forward on the amended motion of Article 1, that's before us. There was a misconception somehow that we need to table it and proceed back to take a vote on something, but after conferring with town council, we do not have to take any vote on anything. We need to just move forward and discuss the amended motion of Article 1 as we were doing. So what I'm trying to do is just take this off the table. So just procedurally, why don't we just do this? I need a motion to take it off the table. So made by Carolyn, you got to speak up.
So made.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Max Manion. So now I have a motion to take this off the table, so we can move forward. And we're going to just kind of get through this. If we can clear the hands? This is to move forward back to discuss the amended motion. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand, so we can move forward to discuss this See, if we were, if we were in a person, in-person meeting, I could just kind of gavel it forward and we're done. But I can't do it that way. All right, can we have a count on the raised hands? We got a count? Okay. Please lower the hands, technicians, please lower the hands. Lower your, okay, do we have it clear? Let me know when it's clear. All right, all those opposed?
No.
Okay, hands are still up, let's clear those hands. Please, don't raise your hand right now. We're clearing the hands, we're clearing the hands, don't raise your hands yet. Please, don't raise your hands. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hands. Are we good? Can we clear the hands? Clear the hands? Clear the hands? Please, don't raise your hands, stay off those buttons, please. Are we clear? Please, don't raise your hand. All those abstaining, raise your hands now. This is for abstentions. Okay, we have a, okay, our clerk, please announce the vote.
Yes, one of two, six no, and six abstentions. And I'd like everyone at home and who's watching this, IT fixed my computer, so these are accurate counts.
Thank you, Stephanie, town clerk. All right, the motion passes, 102 yes, 6 no, 6 abstentions. All right, now we're back to the amended motion before you. All right, now I need to, I think we're done with Jim. Jim Garren, did you have any more technical questions? Give you an option to ask a question. Otherwise, we're going to move on. All right, we're going to move on. Next up is David Laurie. Can we bring in David Laurie?
Thank you. Bob, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, please state your name.
Yes, David, David Laurie, precinct 6.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, first question, is the town accountant available to answer a question?
It depends upon your question, she would be.
Town accountant, well, this is a question about the free cash that was certified.
Oh, I'm sorry, town accountant, I thought you said town council.
No, town accountant.
Yeah.
And I have a free cash question.
All right, go ahead.
The question is, how much of the $5.6 million that was certified is from turnbacks of FY '21?
Approximately 2.8 million.
Thank you, Bill. And, yeah, I have a question now for the town manager, through you, through you, Mr. Moderator. The question is, in the last three years, there's been about half a million dollars worth of debt service that came off the books, where it came into the, it came into our general fund. How mu, how many new services or expanded services came into the town over those three years?
Let me, first, I want to respond a little bit to the, the first on the free cash question. Mr. Row provided an answer to that, but I would also like to point out that I made it very clear during last year's budget season that there would be free cash turnbacks, as I was only authorizing emergency spending, because we were unsure because of COVID where our revenues would come. So a good portion of the money that we did not use was because we did not spend, because we were unsure of what revenues we might have. And the worst thing we could have done was, was, was spending.
All right. Do you, Mr. Moderator?
Secondly, secondly, Mr. Laurie, an answer to your question on expanded services, we have not expanded town services. I have consolidated and made services more efficient, I removed the social services director and put that under a human services director for significant savings. Some of the turnback money also was from fully funding in anticipation of being able to staff our police and fire departments fully, but because of recruitment issues nationwide in these areas, we did have several positions that remained unfunded. If we were to use up all of that money, we then could no longer budget for a full complement of people like police and firefighters. So yes, it was turnback money, but there was not an, there was not an expansion of services. The only operational service that was added was some code enforcement that the board had requested for quality of life issues in town.
Right, but you didn't, you didn't use up the half a million in new services.
Excuse me, David, do you have a direct question?
Yeah, it was my question, and she answered it. My third, my third question and last one, through you, Mr. Moderators, to the town council, it's a technical question about the, it's a procedural question for this, for, for a substitute motion that's on the table, it's in the virtual table, does it require a majority vote or a two-thirds vote to get it accepted by town meeting?
You want to answer that? Okay.
Not to vote, not to vote, not to do the final vote of, but to, to, the vote to accept a substitute motion, not, not to do the final vote, is that a majority or two-thirds?
Good.
Mr. Moderator.
Town council, weigh in, please.
A substitute motion is the equivalent of an amendment of the original motion. It's essentially saying, let's take this new motion and put this on the floor. Approval of an amendment is a majority vote. However, if amendment was approved, so that we were voting on what's on your screen right now, then that will require a two-thirds vote, because it's authorizing borrowing.
Thank you.
Are we all set, Mr. Laurie?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, I'm good.
All right, thank you. Next up is Peter Banis. Let's bring in Peter Banis. When you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, Peter.
Hey, Bob?
Yes, Peter, go ahead, precinct, name and precinct number.
Peter Banis, precinct 2. My original, my original question was questioning about the 21E, which was already asked by John Anzavino, and I, I think we got that answer, that, that was the question of whether or not the owner of the property should have paid for that, that survey. So that, that was, that was the reason I, I put that out there. And the other, the other question is, with all the issues that the 21E potentially brings up, I, I looked through the book today, and I can't understand, I know there was a difference in savings that the town manager mentioned about the properties, but we wouldn't have any issue with the 21E on, on the other property. That's my only comment, thank you.
Well, we don't know that. Well, a, actually, we, we don't know that. We likely would have, the reason we didn't put out for bid on it was we knew it was a less complicated property from the standpoint of numbers, we didn't ask for a quote, I should say, because we knew it was less complicated from number of lots. But we still ultimately would have had to have a 21, we have absolutely no idea what might be underground on the Park Street. So we would have had one on any property. The, the quote was simply to find out, to get an idea of what it was going to cost, and we went with what we thought would be the more expensive one, when we asked for a quote on a six parcel property, knowing that the other one would be one to two parcels. And we were somewhat familiar with the, the surveying of that, but as far as the hazardous end of it, we would have had no knowledge, we would have still had to do a 21E.
Well, the loca, the location of 850 Park is, is up high, the location of the American Legion, and I looked in the map today that was in this book, and I already had a, had a.
Okay, Mr. Banis, what's your question? You got to ask a question.
No, my, my question, my question I asked. Why, why, we, we're trying to buy this property, okay? We don't know anything about the property, and, oh, the other one could be surveyed, sure, you can survey, but I, I would guarantee that there's not any issue with any potential hazardous issues or anything at 850 Park. So the savings that you're trying to use as your reason for selecting that, I just don't buy it. So that's my comment, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Banis. Next up is Reggie Nunley, can we bring in Mr. Nunley? And Reggie, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Reggie Nunley, precinct 1. My question is, with the purchase of this property, how much tax revenue are we losing? Has, has there been an analysis on that?
Let's see if we can get that answer for you. Robin, who can take that for us?
I, I hope, I don't, you know, I have to, I would have to find out, I know the assessed value of all the lots combined was 829,000. We do know it got paid up in taxes, no taxes are, no taxes are owed, but I will try to find out what that number is annually, anytime, we'll, we'll research it right now and see what we can find out. And I'll come back, have an answer.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Nunley?
No, I'm set.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you very much. Next up is Peter Ventresco. Can we bring in Mr. Peter Ventresco? And once you're brought in, Mr. Ventresco, please state your name and precinct number. Mr. Vent, please unmute yourself, please unmute yourself. Is he brought in?
Mr. Ventresco. I can, you can state your name and precinct number, Peter. Peter Ventresco, precinct 8.
Go ahead, sir.
I want to go back to the hazardous waste material with that oil tank, where they looked at it, and it's not leaking, but that's fine. How old is that tank? That might be the third or fourth tank they replaced there, and so there could be all kinds of oil in that ground from previous tanks.
Okay, what is your question? How old is the? How old is the tank? We'll see if you get that answer. Can we get that answer, Dr. Grimm?
Because I don't want, let me, let me finish. I don't want the same thing to happen down at Station Two down on Central Street. When they were discussing that at town meeting, I mentioned that hazardous waste and the town manager at the time says, no, there's no waste there.
Wait a minute, Mr. Ventresco. We're not worried about other locations. This is the location we're talking about.
I don't want the same thing to happen.
Well, Mr. Ventresco, I'm not really out of order if you don't listen to what I'm asking you to say. Ask the question regarding this property, please. So you ask, how old is this tank?
No, I'm saying that tank is probably not the original tank. It's probably been three or four put in there since.
Okay. So what is your question?
So we have no idea what's in that ground unless we take samples.
And your question is?
We gotta know if there's oil pollution in the ground.
Okay, do we know, uh, Dr. Grimm, do we know if anybody took samples?
Mark, Mark will address that.
I can, I can answer that question.
Sure, uh, who's answering the question? Mark Tisdale?
Mark, Mark Tisdale.
Go ahead, sir.
That was a great question, Mr. Ventresco. Um, and, uh, we sort of anticipated it. So the, the environmental scientists took a, did a test pit. We actually dug it with a, with a backhoe right near the underground storage tank. They took some, several samples, sent it to a lab and got it tested and it came back clean. Uh, they also did, did several test pits around the entire property and screened the samples and all the samples came back clean.
All right, I have one more question.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
From what I can gather, they decided the price of this property by the evaluation of four buildable house lots. Well, I don't see how you could put four buildable house lots on two acres.
So the appraisal was done by a professional appraiser who looks at the best use, the likely use, the value of it for the use that it's going to be used for. So when they appraise it, it's actually six lots total. It's four acres, five, five acres of land. And what's evaluated is what its value would be, in this case, for a municipal use. So if we were to buy a piece of property for municipal use, that's how it's evaluated.
Okay. We all set, Mr. Ventresco?
Yeah, all set.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Paul, I do, I do have a response for Mr. Nunley. We believe it's approximately, uh, $21,000. And remembering that at this point, the only sites we had were, were private sites. And the other site was about, uh, 400,000 more. So accordingly, the tax would have been just a little bit more. But it's approximately 21,000 a year. And assessing the importance of that and the need for that, if we look at that in comparison to what the value of the Freeman Street property going online privately would be, it's actually, we wouldn't make it back. So it's about 21,000 a year off the tax roll as best as we can, just quickly calculate.
Okay, thank you, Robin. And thank you, Mr. Ventresco. Next up is Eric Anderson. Can we bring in Eric Anderson? And Eric, when you're brought in, can please state your name and precinct number, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Eric Anderson, Jr., precinct two and finance committee member. Um, apologies if this has been answered in another venue, um, but through you to the town manager and possibly town council. I have, you know, seen and read remarks to the effect that the town cannot purchase a property at a price above the appraisal value. And of course, um, this bid is above the appraisal value. So just to, I, I was just curious if you can clarify and speak to the town's authority, um, to purchase the property at the price that has been, um, requested by the seller. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Uh, Robin, would you like to take that or you want town council?
Yeah, there is, there's, there's no restriction on us buying it above appraised value. There's a state law on, uh, cities, large cities have to be within five percent. Twenty-five, about 25% of appraised value. We are actually within that anyway, even if that was the case that it applied to us. But we actually confirmed it does not apply to towns. So we are able to go that $70,000 over the, the, uh, appraised value. So again, the appraised value is a million eight, a million 80,000. The purchase, the, uh, bid was 1.150. Uh, and I will also tell you, there's been a lot of misinformation. We do not have the authority to negotiate the price down. Bid is the bid, um, or else you would completely violate the whole bid process. So we cannot go back to the, the seller and say, look, it's appraised at that number, can you come down? Uh, then that would be unfair to anybody else who may have or would have considered bidding or did bid. But we absolutely can buy above appraised value. Uh, and in this case, we're buying at about four or five percent, which is well within anything, even if the city rule applied to us. But it does not.
Thank you.
Is that Mr. Anderson, you have any more questions?
I do not, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next up is James Curtin. Mr. Curtin, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
James Curtin, precinct four.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, a couple of questions for you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
You have this listed as a borrow, a borrowing article which would require a two-thirds vote, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, well, the way I'm reading this, it's not a borrowing article. Whether it get, the borrowing is up to the taxpayer because it's, it's basically all you're doing is you're taking this and you're putting it out for the taxpayer to decide whether or not he wants to do it. Town meeting's not, not deciding the borrowing, the taxpayer is, correct?
Uh, I'm gonna let, since it's a legal question, I'm gonna have town council wait in for you. Town council?
Certainly, Mr. Moderator, through you. Uh, this is a borrowing article. And it is a borrowing article because it's authorizing the town to borrow a sum of money. To the extent that, that, that it will be dependent upon a proposition two and a half debt exclusion, it leaves the final say up to the voters. However, approval of that, of this proposal today at town meeting will essentially be waiting to see what the, what the voters do. Um, so while the voters will ultimately make a decision, town meeting is the only entity that can appropriate the money. And that, um, and that is what we're talking about today.
You, town council. Any other questions?
All set, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Curtin. All right, we're gonna move on, Scott Carrera. Uh, Scott, just unmute yourself and please identify yourself with your precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Scott Carrera, precinct two. Through you, there's, uh, an enforcement from the Conservation Commission on this property. That has to be cleared up or is the town gonna be on the hook for that too?
All right.
I can answer that question.
Go ahead, Mark.
That's a good point, Mr. Carrera. Uh, there is an enforcement order on that property. Uh, the owner did some work in the regulated buffer zone area. Uh, since then, he's mitigated the area to the satisfaction of the conservation agent, but it still needs to go in front of the Conservation Commission for final, uh, clear, uh, approval.
Any other questions?
I, I made a call today and, um, there's been no contact with anybody from that property with conservation whatsoever. That they have been trying to get a hold of him and he hasn't returned calls. And somebody said to me, well, it's, it's just not a, a big problem, it's a little problem. When you have a voted, um, enforcement order, there's no such thing as a big problem or a small problem. It's a problem because a board took a vote. I sat on that board and I know what this, this means. We shouldn't be passing papers with, with now two swords hanging over our head that we're paying for.
Any other questions, Scott?
No, that's, that's all I had. I wanted to know if it was cleared up and I, and it had been voted by the board.
Mr. Moderator, I'd still like to have Mark respond to that.
Quickly, Mark, go ahead.
No, I mean, I can just tell you by, through my conversations with the environmental affairs officer, uh, James Connellin, that there was an open enforcement order. Uh, he was, the, the owner was directed to mitigate the issue. Uh, and with, on a site inspection with JC, in his opinion, the issue's been mitigated properly. There needs to be a formal vote done by the Conservation Commission. Uh, again, I think that would be something that could be done as part of the condition of the purchase and sales that any outstanding enforcement orders are closed properly through the town.
No further questions, Scott?
Nope, these, these, I'm only, I'm not trying to hang anything up. I'm not a fire department hater or anything like that by any, by any means. I'm just trying to make sure that if this site gets chosen, it goes forward without any hitches. That's all I'm trying to do. And I know in the state of Massachusetts, you cannot pass papers unless that tank is pulled. You can test it all you want. The law says it's gotta come out of the ground. So dig all the holes you want, it's gotta come out of the ground.
Scott, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, we're gonna move along, Brian Holmes. Mr. Holmes, when you're brought in, can please state your name and precinct number, please.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Brian Holmes, precinct three.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, through you, um, what's the average cost gonna be for your average homeowner if the voters authorize this?
Uh, sure, Ms. Moderator, um, the average homeowner with the way the select board voted with a 65%, 35% debt exclusion, part of average home of 450,000, which is actually a little higher than what the median average home would be, you know, with rebound, uh, it will be approximately $64 a year, approximately $16, well, $64 next year, approximately $16 a quarter, it would be next year. Uh, and that was really very much a part of the plan. Our goal is to keep it under $20 a quarter and still get this project done. And so approximately $16 a quarter, people would see $64 on a $450,000 house next year.
Okay, and, and for how many years does that $64 for one entire calendar year last?
Yeah, it's, it's a 30-year note and we went that way. I know it's unusual, people typically try to borrow at 20. But given the interest rates right now and under the advice of our financial advisors, they, uh, suggested 30 years because when you look at the real value of this, uh, we actually are paying less or about the same as we would on a 20-year. And it allows the homeowner to pay less every year. So instead of putting a higher burden for 20 years, we went with a lower burden over an extended amount of time and actually even averaging out, it's a savings.
Okay, so $64 a year, I, I think that's great. Thank you.
Well, 64 in the first year, you know, as the school one, it becomes part of the levy, but that's about a dollar and change a year beyond that. A dollar and change.
Great, thank you very much.
Is that Mr. Holmes?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Next up is Robert Cohn. Mr. Cohn, when you're brought in, can you please state your name and precinct number?
Robert Cohn, precinct five. Uh, question was just asked about the tax rate. Uh, I'm just curious, is this town due for reevaluations in the next year or two?
Yes, the town is, oh, sorry, Mr. Moderator, the town is currently under rev- rebound. The tax assessors board presented this to the select board last Thursday. Unfortunately, what we are seeing is a shift in residential values because residential went up more than commercial. Commercial values actually were very sluggish. Uh, so they will, homeowners will see, uh, unfortunately disproportionate increase. And the board will set a rate to try to offset that so it balances a little more toward the commercial. What I will say is that 60 some odd dollars that we're referencing takes into account when we talk about the average home cost. The average home cost right now is approximately 370, I believe. Uh, with the rebound, the average home would be approximately 420. We calculated our 64 on 450. So we did take into account that there would be a rebound and then that would impact, um, property values in town.
Okay, another question is, and I asked, I was at the site myself, I like the site too. Again, the building, this town is notorious of building buildings and when we're through though, they're too small. Is this gonna happen again?
No, absolutely not. And I'll turn this over to Taylor, who's, uh, who's our project manager and, and let him, as the expert, speak on this bit.
Yes, this, this building does, this building does, uh, does have, um, does have growth built into it. I believe it's around 11% growth. Uh, it is a 50-year building, if not more. Um, so we, we have taken that into consideration and the designers took that into consideration, uh, you know, when putting together this plan.
And do you have room to expand the fire station if you need it?
On the site, at the Prospect Street, three site.
I would say, yeah, I would, okay. Um, wait a minute.
Are you all set, Mr.?
Yes, and, and, uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome, sir. Uh, the person who answered, Mr. Cohn, could, is it Taylor? Could you just give me, uh, state your name, what, and, um, you know.
Yes.
Position there?
Yeah, Taylor McDonald, Palmer Associates, partner.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is John Distefano. Can we bring in Mr. Distefano? And John, when you're brought in, can you please state your name and precinct number?
John Distefano, precinct two. Um, I'd like to know why, um, we're not putting everything on the one roof. Why are we still gonna use the old station for the offices and not put them in the new building?
So there's a combination of reasons. New construction is far more expensive right now. So had we done a project that had a headquarters and appropriate training in, a training facility and the parking that we would need for that, we would have had a much larger footprint, which would have required larger parcels of land. In the past, when that had been looked at and bid out, they came in at about a million dollars higher. When we looked at the total cost of a project, including what the land acquisition cost would be and a fire station that included all of those things that we need, it, it came out for about $4 million more than this project, even including the refurbishment of Freeman Street. Additionally, we gain, not only is it a financial savings, it's an operational benefit for the community. Our headquarters now is centrally located between the two stations as opposed to on one side of town. So that if we do training, our firefighters are all centrally located. They are not pitched on one side of town if a call comes in, for example. Secondly, in refurbishing that building, we're also going to expand its use. It'll be a fire headquarters. It also will be fire prevention and permitting. So when people are opening businesses or looking for prevention and, and, uh, issues that have public access, they'll be able to come downtown, access the fire, public fire needs, and then come right across to town while we're permitting and whatnot and bring foot traffic downtown. It actually, um, makes it a lot easier and use it more user-friendly for the public. Finally, we also will be putting a public health, uh, component in there. Right now, our public health division sits on the second floor in, in sort of one closed-off room. When we run vaccination clinics, testing sites now, things that we actually never forced are in the past. So we've done flu vaccines right along. Uh, what we're finding is that public access for public health is, is, is becoming a priority. We will account for that in this building as well. And then from a historic standpoint, we're gonna gain a, a bay that will house and store fire truck and provide some community museum, uh, type programs. We are looking to restore the original facade of the building back to the historic facade as well. We feel that it'll be more of a showpiece downtown as well as municipal operations. The other thing we're gaining is an emergency operation center. Any community I've worked in particularly this size or bigger should have an EOC. We do not have one currently. During the last storm, for example, when the whole town was without power, National Grid offered to the fire chief to come in and operate out of Stoughton, and we had nowhere where we could operate. We don't have anywhere currently where there's a hurricane, we can all gather very centrally and handle a hurricane, uh, an active shooter situation, a massive fire, a bomb scare, whatever it might be, a pandemic. We don't have an emergency operation center. This would provide for that as well, very centrally located for the police chief, myself, DPW, the school superintendent, anybody we needed to bring in. So it's a savings of 4 million and it's an operational benefit.
Yes, I have one more question.
And a historic, and a historic preservation.
I just have one.
Sure.
I just have one question. Um, what other sites in town were considered besides Prospect Street and, uh, Park Street?
So the, historically, there had, this, when this project was originally being looked at as a public safety building, there were probably 10 or 12 sites that were vetted, maybe even more. 14 sites, 14 sites were vetted. Uh, none of them would go to serve for combined fire police that would provide the services that both needed. Uh, we went out to bid several times to try to get someone to come in to, with a bid that where it would work, and we did not have any success. Um, the, then when we started to look at a one fire station option, we went out and there were very few bids for that. I believe that was the one where we got the original Park Street bid. Uh, and then that ended up actually withdrawn and we had no sites available for that. And then this last time, we had three bids come in, two variations on one parcel, either a smaller parcel or a larger, and then this other parcel that, that was selected because it was optimal and lower priced. So over the, the three or four years that this project has been going on, approximately 14 different parcels were vetted and several requests or proposals went out for private properties.
Okay, thank you.
You all set, John?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your comments.
You're welcome, thank you.
Uh, next up is Richard Perlin. Please bring in Mr. Perlin. And Rich, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, I got my question answered, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Javi Spack. Um, please bring in Mr. Javi Spack. And Javi, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number. Are we bringing in Mr. Spack?
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Hi, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for the, uh, quick, uh, answering me. Uh, my question was previously asked and answered. It had to do with the, the cost of the, uh, the bid cost on the property as opposed to what the, uh, assessed value was, and I thank you very much for the answer.
Well, thank you very much for your participation. We're gonna move on. Mr. Stephen Tapper, let's bring in Mr. Tapper. And Stephen, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number. Uh, Mr. Stephen, please unmute yourself. Uh, Mr. Tapper, did you unmute yourself? Okay, we're gonna move on. Next up, Mark Zemanian, did you have a question? Okay, we'll come back to Mr. Zemanian. Who's up next? I see, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A quick question to, uh, town engineer through you, to the town engineer. I think the question was asked about the tank. It was brought up that there was an oil tank, and I apologize if I didn't hear the correct part of your response. But I know on, uh, at fifteen Pleasant Street, we had a situation. The seller of the property used to pull the tank. Are they doing that? Did I hear an answer on that?
I can answer that, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yeah, I, I think it would be common practice to include that as part of the purchase, purchase and sales agreement, to have that tank removed and mitigated properly.
And that will be inserted in the PNS?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes?
I'll refer to the, the big boss over here.
Yeah, because we didn't have that, we recall, we didn't have that in fifteen Pleasant Street. So now will that be inserted in the PNS? That definitely the, the seller will remove the tank at his cost and pick up any, any contingent li- any, any contingent liabilities to that?
Well, we've, we've already, yeah, we, so we've already reviewed that there's no, there's nothing leaking around that tank. Uh, we certainly can put into a purchase and sales that we want a tank removed. Uh, the other, one of the major differences with fifteen Pleasant was that that tank was still operational to the building. So if we had pulled it out, we wouldn't have had a heating system in the building. This one is part of a, a building that is no longer really functioning.
Just wanted to hear that. Thanks an awful lot.
Are you all set, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I am now.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're gonna move back to Mark Zemanian. So he's over. Mr. Mark Zemanian, please state your name and precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Zemanian, Precinct 1. I was dealing with a technical issue, so I appreciate the time there. Uh, I have two questions. One has been partially answered, but I would like affirmation through you to, uh, the professional staff. Will this be written into the PNS that the tank will be removed? I think that's very important, and I just wanna hear, yes, it will, if that's the case. It was to the town manager and professional staff.
Can anybody answer that?
So, I'm sorry, uh, Mike, Mike Carroll, Fire Chief. Um, the only, the only issue that may be, that I would think, is, uh, Master of Law 527, uh, TMR 9.0, is that if it's operational and still heating, now, we've never been in the building, um, technically, they don't have to. Um, but I don't think that building's been up. I don't think it's been, you know, the furnace has been running. We have not stepped foot inside that property. Um, we're not gonna have a, because I know we're not gonna, you know, use oil as a heating, so, you know, I, I'm sure as far as when we, I, I hate to speak for anybody, but when we start to look into the PNS, it would certainly be a recommendation of ours, and, um, but, you know, we have to actually see if, if it's not leaking, if it's functioning. Um, this law kinda covers him, but at the same time, um, I would imagine he's very willing to be seen as if he's very willing to work with us. So, um, you know, that's, that's as much of an answer that I can give from a law skill. Unless, unless, uh, well, it's just in chief, that's a different. We can require in the PNS that they remove it since we're not gonna be using it to heat the building.
Right.
So, so we can require.
We don't need the oil tank.
We're not, we're not gonna use the building. We're not gonna ever heat it. We can require that they disconnect from the heating system and remove the oil tank as part of the PNS.
That, that would be fantastic. That's what I was looking to hear.
So different than when you're buying a home, and there are certain things you want done before you buy it, and similar to that. It may not, you know.
I understand what you're saying, Madam Town Manager. I guess from our meeting town, meeting representatives' point of view, we're essentially buying a piece of property with a building on it, and it's good to know that we can have that, uh, require that that tank be removed. I think that would answer a lot of questions. My second question is, um, of the, uh, twenty-seven point three million, we've talked about bonding at thirty years versus twenty. Could you give me the hard cost difference between twenty and thirty years through you, Mr. Moderator, to whomever can answer that question?
Well, there's, this, so that's a, a question that sounds very simple, but it's more complicated than that. It, on the surface, it looks like it's four million dollars in today's dollars, but when you, when you look at how the finance people, Cindera Community, looks at it, it's actually significantly less, and almost comes down to no increasing cost when you look at present-day dollars versus thirty-year inflated dollars. Susan, do you want?
At three percent.
So speak, speak up. And that would be, yes, that would be at three percent, and Cinder is confident we will come in far lower than that.
At three percent, actually, the twenty-year, um, amount of money that's paid back is just, just a little bit higher than thirty-year because of the, uh, concept of the time value of money, which we all know about. You earn a hundred dollars today, it's not gonna be the same as, um, what you can spend it on ten or twenty or thirty years from now.
So we're in an extremely unique time to thirty years, actually, plus us less than twenty years, ultimately. But thirty is basically pretty much a wash to go thirty versus twenty. Now, if you're looking at actual today's dollars, yes, there's a difference, but again, um, it's really a very misleading way to look at it, and actually not financially prudent, according to our financial experts.
That phenomenon today is because the yield curve has inverted slightly today. Um, that exists at anything over two and a half percent. Under two and a half percent for thirty-year becomes a little bit more expensive, and that's the best answer I can give you.
I understand. I was actually just looking for the true, uh, savings to communicate until we can answer that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Uh, one second, please. Move on. Oh, I'm sorry, Manny Pacico, you're next. Uh, let's bring in Manny Pacico, and Manny, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number. Thank you.
This is Manny Pacico, Precinct 1. Um, I am sorry, I did not mean to raise my hand.
Oh, that's okay. No problem.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move right on. Uh, next up is Denise Bronston. Denise, when you're, uh, brought in, please state your name and precinct number.
Uh, Denise Bronston, Precinct 8.
Yes, go ahead.
My question is, how long would it take for a fire engine to leave, leaving from Prospect Street to get to Highland Street in the Ames Pond area?
Um, that, that, that's a great question, uh, Mike Carroll, Fire Chief. Um, we, Ms. Moderator.
Sure.
So that area has always been, you know, approximately a six-minute response. The way the town is, districted now, we district it District 1, which, where Freeman Street covers, and District 2 is, uh, where Station 2 covers. Uh, there, so Station 2 actually handles those calls on that end of town. Um, and their response is approximately, I believe, five and a half, oh, uh, yeah, five to five and a half minutes on a response. Um, where Freeman Street now is, is, uh, where Freeman Street is, it's not really much of a difference. Um, you know, I haven't ran the numbers. I'm sure they're, they're approximately the eight-minute response up to that area, and, and it's important because there's no hybrids up in that area. So that's always a concern of ours. Uh, we actually, uh, we actually do a mutual, uh, we call it mutually automatic, or it's called automatic aid or automatic response, where we have Easton from the Bay Road Station responding there at the same time on a recorded house file. I hope that answers.
All right, Denise, you have any other questions?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is David Walsh. When you're brought in, can you please state your name and precinct number?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go right ahead. Name and precinct.
Yes, good evening, sir. So, um, this is David Walsh, Precinct 2. Uh, my question's related to abutters. I, I believe the chief said he did reach out to the abutters over there to make sure that they had a positive reaction to the, to the, uh, to the fire station, so I just wanted him to address that for the, uh, for the body on, uh, you know, on the neighbor's response. Over.
Okay, do we have someone that can answer? Mr. Walsh?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, uh, through you, uh, Mike Carroll, Fire Chief.
Yes, go ahead, Chief.
So, so I, I actually probably made a mistake, and what I mean by that is, I, through the town's GIS, I looked up four hundred Prospect, and I did all the abutters. What, I believe, um, some of the residents that I spoke to one tonight, uh, some of that possible land doesn't come under a four hundred total, so, um, I will, and I, and I promise that I will reach out to all of them. Um, I'll go all the way down. So when you go into the town's website and, and talk to the GIS map, you pull up four hundred Prospect, and you run, you could, you have the opportunity to, to run all the abutters. And, uh, when I did that, I sent it out to, I believe, over forty? Yeah, I, I, I sent out forty, uh, personal letters to, um, what, what I thought at the time was all the abutters. Uh, and, um, you know, we had our, our site visits. We went out and met, um, we met, we went out and met a couple of times, a, a, and, uh, we actually had neighbors coming in, um, at the kitchen table at, at Mrs. O'Reilly's house, and, uh, a, a few others, uh, came to the fire station. Uh, so we have reached out to what we assumed were the abutters when we pulled up that address. I believe I can expand that, um, and, and go back behind and look all the way down Prospect Street. I'm more than willing to do that. That's, that's, um, the easy part of this, I would say. So, uh, and of course, you know, it, it, I tried to reach out as much as we could. You know, and, uh, you know, I, I'm not sure whether you had some calls, but I, I would certainly, uh, you know, certainly open up the fire station to have them come, or I would go up and meet them like we did before.
Mr. Walsh, any other questions?
No, that's it. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure the abutters had, uh, had feedback, input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next up is Paul Demuse. Paul, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Demuse, Precinct 3. In some previous forums with the town manager and some financial advisors, there was mention of ARPA funds and also that, um, some CPC funds could be used for the renovation of the, of, uh, the Freeman Street building. I haven't heard anything about that tonight, and I just wanted to make sure that the members are aware of that, and if the town manager could elaborate on that.
Sure, we have, uh, we have a couple of sort of pots, if you will, of ARPA money, and that's totaling a little over six million dollars that we can use toward this project. Should the project come in at the twenty-seven-three, which does build in contingency, so we're comfortable with that number, um, approximately over the six point three would actually, um, be able to be, come out of ARPA money. I believe it's six point eight, Susan, we have, or six seven?
Six eight.
Six eight, we have of ARPA money that we can use toward this, which takes our twenty-seven-three down, uh, just below the twenty-one. And again, this is all pursuant with three percent interest rate. It may actually all be less than this if we do over an average.
That doesn't affect the dollars.
Right. But generally, the other, the other, um, part of it, so generally, we have at least six point, we have six point three in ARPA funds we can use. That puts us well within the range on the twenty-one million that we've talked about compared to that twenty-seven, twenty-three million. And then as far as CPC, and that's part of the reason for the amendment on this, we've talked right along about using CPC, so there really was no substantive change on this. The amendment on this came, uh, I've already put a free application into CPC, and they've been very open to discussing this with us. But because of legalities on how the language has to be written so that we don't supplant it, we did have to amend this. Um, however, there are components of this project in a truly historic renovation. The facade work on Freeman Street and the bay that will house the, uh, old fire truck and serve as a museum is very much a CPC-related project, so yes, we are still hopeful. I put in a very broad range of seven hundred fifty thousand, so I think it was two million. Um, so I don't know exactly what it is, but if we, even if we did not, for whatever get, reason, get that money, our ARPA funding more than covers us on the gap between the twenty-seven-three down to the twenty-one.
And one, uh, one more question. The sixteen dollars a quarter or sixty-four dollars average for a house worth four hundred fifty thousand, is that calculated on the twenty-seven or the possible twenty, twenty-one?
Twenty-one. That is calculated on the twenty-one. But again, now, if the interest rates are lower, that number actually may drop. So where can we calculate that, our worst-case scenario of three percent?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul. Uh, Miss, um, Robin, can you just explain to me, uh, at least define what's ARPA money? I'm not, you know, a lot of people probably don't even know that. I don't know for sure either.
ARPA money is the funding, some of the first round of federal funding that came. There was CARES money, and then there was ARPA money. ARPA money is what came. Some of it came directly to the town, and some of it went to the county. A good hunk of this is coming from the county money, but it's a pass-through. It is our money to use. Susan has worked with them and discussed with our attorneys, Lisa Mead and Brian Lennahan, have also confirmed that, uh, the fire station will fit into the, uh, parameters of what ARPA money can be used for. We've used some of it, for example, for our Park Street sewer project, nine hundred fifty thousand for that. So we're trying to use this appropriately to offset one-time spending. The last thing we ever wanna do is use money to fill budgetary holes, um, that were not directly COVID-related and create structural deficits. So what we were looking for when this money came in is to use one-time, uh, projects, and this timing-wise, actually, in a, in a weird way, there was a tiny silver lining to COVID for us, and that's this, this six point three million. There is more federal funding coming that people are discussing about from the, the federal package that just passed, but we have not gotten any word yet, um, the specifics of that. Susan is looking aggressively into that. Uh, if there's more.
Okay, okay, let me, can I, can I stop you there? Okay, thank you. You explained. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on. Hands next up. Will we bring in Mr. Lennahan? Thank you for that explanation, Robin. Appreciate it.
Yes, John Lennahan, Precinct 1. Uh, Mr. Moderator, through you to those that would be writing the PNS. Uh, we had a lot of discussion about that oil tank that's sitting there, but there was also earlier discussion about what we don't know is there. Would the PNS be written in such a way as to require passing a twenty-one E and/or any other, um, hazardous waste found on the property being remediated before we consummate the deal?
Yeah, so the, the twenty-one E already did pass, uh, and we found no evidence of hazardous. So I'm not sure if that answers the question, but the twenty-one E was already done. That included wetland hazardous materials. As Mark said, they did do the test pits around the oil tank to be sure that there was no presence of oil there.
Okay, thank you.
Are you all set, John?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Next up is Diane Dolan. Can we bring in Diane Dolan? Diane, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number.
Um, can you hear me?
It's okay.
Okay. Diane Dolan, Precinct 7, uh, also on Finance Committee. Uh, and the one thing just that the chief said and the, my previous colleague just mentioned, we've talked about the oil tank. The chief said, we've never been in the building. That building has gotta be seventy or eighty years old. Is there any asbestos? Is there a lot of hazardous stuff in that building that we're gonna have to take care of? This is what happened on Pleasant Street. I just wanna make sure that we're not barking into something we're gonna have another problem with.
Yeah, so, so this would happen, um, this would be standard with any property we bought that had any building on it. We do have hazmat. The cost of hazmat is already built into this project. That's not something that you necessarily could write into a purchase and sales. When you demolish a building, you never know what you're gonna hit. I'll give you an example. When we took down our own school building, we had a major unexpected expense because the soil showed oil contamination, and nobody knew how or where or when. And we had to do a cleanup on it, and that was our own building, that we had to do a cleanup on. It really can't be much you can anticipate. You do your best to ensure that all the surrounding ground is clean, and that's what the twenty-one E does, but if there's asbestos or whatnot in the building... building, that's sort of presumed to be built into your construction and demolition costs. So our, our, we have a contingency. So let's say we don't hit it. We actually will find that, that we're, you know, we, it's not as high as we thought. We build it in on a contingency based on what we might expect in a building of that age and, and structure. That's what the experts take into account.
Okay. I guess I just, through you, Mr. Moderator, I guess I just find it odd that no one's been in that building to even look around. Thank you.
Any other questions? Are you all set?
If I could just follow up.
I'm all set.
Yeah. If, if I could just follow up, there, there really wouldn't be reason to. It was vacated a few years back, but we know we're demolishing it. So what's in the building is somewhat irrelevant. You can pretty much predict what's constructed in there. Might there be some asbestos, as there are in most things of a certain era? Yeah, there very well might be. But there's, there's really nothing all that much of a concern beyond what you would normally have when you demo any, any building that's been just sitting vacant for a few years.
Okay. Thank you, Robin. We're gonna move on. Jess Minor, can we bring in Jess Minor? And when you're brought in, Jess, can you please state your name and precinct number?
Hi, Jess Minor, precinct five, member of the Finance Committee. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, okay. You're fine. Go ahead, Jess.
Great, thanks. I have three questions. The first is about the title to the property. So my understanding is there is a, you know, a criminal complaint and an attorney is involved and that the claim involves the fact that the, the seller did not have the right to actually sell the property to the, to the buyer who would now be the seller to us. And I'm just wondering if that's true. How is it possible that the title could be clear? So that's my first question. My second question is about post-construction. I'm just wondering if any analyses have been done yet. I have, I've heard some concerns from some of the neighbors that they're a little worried that once the massive new fire station and a widened road and everything else gets built with impervious cover, that, you know, surrounded by wetlands, that runoff might lead to flooding. And I'm just wondering if the town engineer has done any analyses to ensure that there wouldn't be flooding or any other things that would happen to negatively affect the neighbors nearby. And then my last question on the finances relates to, I had asked this in, in one of the sessions, but I'd just like to hear the town manager speak on this to, to the full town meeting. What if the town meeting votes this article up and then the voters at the polls vote down the debt exclusion? What would be our contingency plan on the financing? Thank you.
Those questions answered?
Sure. So I'm going to start with that, that, that first one, Dr. Minor. So there's been a lot of talk about this. There is no complaint filed. They're having to do with the actual authority to buy it. There's a lot of hearsay about whether or not the person had to sell it. There's been no formal complaint filed about that. Any complaint or formal investigation involves a dispersal of funds after the sale by the people involved from the original seller, not the seller to us. So there is no complaint filed. And in fact, today, but in fact, Friday, we received a, a letter that appeared to be a legal letter just saying, well, people are aware that there are some problems. And again, it's hearsay. The only thing concrete is an investigation regarding the dispersal of funds of the sale. I do have a, a legal statement that says, from, from our attorney, from Attorney Linnahan, that he reviewed the most recent December 3rd letter, as we had it come in Friday night. He said, he understands that similar allegation or allegations were made previously as well. And these are his words. "At the time, I was of the opinion that the town should continue to move forward with its procurement process unless and until there was reason to do otherwise. The new letter does not change my opinion." He then goes on to point out that he did do a title exam. The wording on the title exam was "as to Prospect Street." The title report states there are no mortgages, attachments, executions, or tax liens. It identifies the encumbrances in particular of the right-of-way. That's the Conservation Commission thing that Mr. Carrara addressed earlier. So there are no, there is nothing attached to the title. And in fact, Mr. Linnahan also does point out that, he says, "In fact, if the town were to use this letter as a basis to pass out this property, it could create exposure to the town. As a seller, could claim that the town is not honoring its obligations under 30B, but rather is relying upon hearsay, allegations, and suppositions, which again are not reflected on the title and not verified by any court order to thwart the sale. We, of course, will have title insurance, as anybody would buying a property. But at this point, the, I'll, I'll give you the final sentence from Mr. Linnahan. For now, however, I cannot see any legal basis to change course." So that is that question. I'm going to let Mark answer your second question.
Can you answer the second question, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, go ahead. About post-construction. Go ahead, Mr. Fizdale.
Thanks for asking that question, Jess. It sounds kind of corny, but stormwater management's actually one of my expertises. I really love stormwater. As boring of an answer as that sounds, it, it really is. I do love stormwater. Actually, every project that comes into our engineering department, we review every project to be in compliance with the DEP Stormwater Management standards, which require every property to control the rate of runoff in post-development to be less than the rate of runoff in pre-development. So, so in other words, you'll see on a property like this, right now, there's no detention basins controlling stormwater or catch basins or things like that. In post-development, they're going to be required to design stormwater management areas with detention basins to hold the water back in storms and release it at a slower rate so that there's actually a reduction in stormwater runoff from pre-development. Projects like this, it's hard to understand, but they typically improve downstream flooding.
And then to the third question, that's a great question, Jess. If, if it doesn't pass referendum, then we're, you know, ground zero again because the, you know, as opposed, the project requires at least 21 million or 20, up to 21 million of borrowing, regardless of however we borrowed it, whether it was in 6535, whether it was in the budget, whatever the borrowing method is, it's 21 million. And the reality is, we don't have that laying around. They would have to be borrowing. If the debt exclusion did not pass, I'm not sure where that leaves us except to start over.
Are you okay, Jess?
Yeah, I guess, just a, a quick clarifying question to follow up on that.
Sure.
So the town will have, I mean, the town meeting will have authorized the borrowing, but the, the town would not have voted up the debt exclusion specifically. But it, because in this article, in the motion, it's tied to the fact that it's contingent on the approval of the voters, that would negate all of this and we would have to start over. Am I understanding that correctly? I just want to make sure I got that right.
I would defer to town council on that.
We're gonna have the last town council to weigh in. Just a moment.
Mr. Moderator, through you.
Yes, go ahead.
The answer to that question is that if the debt exclusion were to fail, then legally there is no debt exclusion and so there is no appropriation at that time for any of these purposes. The law does not prohibit a question from being resubmitted to the voters. That would be at the sole discretion of the select board and it would need to be at least 35 days after the day that they call for the election. They only have 90 days from the date on which town meeting votes in order to have the debt exclusion take effect.
Thank you for that clarification, Town Council. And, and Mr. Moderator, I am done with my line of questioning. I just have one quick request for you. I had asked a while ago about a point of order. I, I was hoping that before we vote on anything related to any articles that we might revisit the voting on the procedural motions for the evening because we, I don't believe we ever voted on those.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll get to that right after this article.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for reminding me, Jess. Appreciate it. All right, we're gonna move on. I just want transparency. Mr. Ventresco, you're on the list, but you already spoke, so I have others that want to speak. So we're gonna skip over you right now. Next up is Ed Trumfield. Mr. Trumfield, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
All right. Ed Trumfield, precinct five, member of FinCom. I have a whole bunch of questions once we discuss the alternate motion, but I have a question for Mr. Rowe. I want to know on the high school building project, has that been certified and closed and how much money's left over from that project? And if there is anything left over, was that considered as part of going towards the building of this fire station when the selectmen might have discussed their options? And as far as the extra money, the difference between the 20-year and the 30-year financing, yeah, it's $3.9 million. And everybody just blows it off that inflation, we don't count it, blah, blah, blah. You pay back with cheaper dollars. Well, for the last 15 years, we've had no inflation. So you'd be paying it back with real dollars.
Mr. Trumfield, is there a question in there?
Yeah, the question is to Mr. Rowe. What's the balance on the high school building project that's left over? And is it closed out yet officially?
Mr. Rowe, can you answer that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. Last time we checked was approximately $1.3 million in surplus proceeds. And we expect another roughly 1.5 to 2 million from the MSBA. And no, the project has not been certified as complete.
Do we have an ETA on when that might be?
You would have to address that to the Building Committee.
Yeah. Mr. Trumfield, I sit on that committee and they are still meeting and there still have been some expenditures going out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Trumfield?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Mr. Tony Souza. Can we bring in Mr. Souza? When you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, Tony.
Am I on?
Yes, you are. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I have multiple questions. First, I 100% in favor of building the fire station. I certainly don't like the way this article was put together. Everything being bundled together.
Okay, well, you, you have a chance to express your opinion.
Okay, my other, my other question, how do we reach?
How do you what?
What do we come up with?
One more time, Tony?
What, what was the question, Mr. Muller?
I, I was, we lost some communication with them. Tony, are you still up?
Am I on now?
Yes, go ahead. Ask your question again. Were you kind of?
We're talking about the price of the property, not the projects. The building.
You know, your microphone's not very clear. In and out. You're fading back and forth. Are you, is it right in front of you? Just don't move around.
It's right in front of me.
Okay, speak very slowly and loud.
How do we reach the $27.3 million? We're only talking about the price of the property. What about the price of the other projects since everything's being put together?
Okay, Taylor, you want to take that?
Yeah, so that, that 27 million total cost, sorry, Mr. Mayor, Taylor McDonald, Palmer Associates, on this project, there. So the total cost of that 27 million, I'm just gonna use round numbers, maybe easy, but roughly, you know, 19.7 million of that is the Prospect Street site. 6.4 million is the Freeman Street renovation. And then the rest of that is the land acquisition.
And I come to town. And my question is why aren't the town meeting wraps with supply with that information other than putting, bundling everything together?
Can anybody answer that?
Yeah, that, that information was actually in the backup material where we described the project in the, in the warrant book.
My apologies. I missed that. I apologize. I still don't like the way this article was put together. I don't like it. And I think the cost is just the tip of the iceberg.
That's your argument. That's for later.
That's my argument.
Mr. Moderator, if, 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 if there's a question on that, how that project's put together, we might have seen bundling in the past, for example, with the high school project. But in this particular case, the bundling is necessary because each project relies on the other. No one can stand alone. And so the breakdown is very clear. It's about $200,000 for the, the Central Street and the other two are broken down. But again, I want to remind Mr. Souza that if we didn't do it that way, our overall cost would have been about $4 billion more. But the reason for the bundling is because not one, no one project can stand alone. They all rely on each other.
Well, I totally disagree. I think we should buy the property first, then go up, put, put the other things together.
Mr. Souza, Tony, those are for comments for later. If you have another question, please ask it now. Otherwise.
Yeah, I do have a question for Mr. Tillsdale if I can.
Sure. Go. One last question. Go ahead.
Yes. Is there public sewer in that property?
There's public sewer in Prospect Street, so there has to be a sewer connection made into Prospect Street.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Up is Deborah Mens. Please bring in Deborah Mens. When she's brought in, Deborah, please state your name and precinct number.
Debbie Mens, precinct eight. Quick question. So the property is eight and a half acres, right?
We need clarification on the acreage?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And how much of, of that property is non-buildable wetlands, flood zone area?
Anybody answer her?
I can answer that question. It's about four, four and a half acres of that, that parcel that's unusable. The usable area is around four to four and a half acres ballpark in that range.
And I will point out, that is taken into account by the appraisers when they do the appraisal values at least.
Okay, thank you.
You all set, Deborah?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Steve Cavey. Steve, you're on the panel. Just unmute yourself and ask your questions. And state your name and precinct number. Go ahead.
Sure. My name is Stephen Cavey. I'm a member of precinct one. I'm a member of the select board. Question I have is to Town Council. I just want clarification to make sure that my understanding is correct on this. But, you know, the article does include language on eminent domain taking. My understanding is the purpose of that is to do a friendly taking, as in, you know, this is not the, the town confiscating land from somebody. It's actually, you know, part of a, a regular transaction. And that, that has benefits to the town, numerous benefits to the town, including protecting against title issues. Could you help me understand if that's correct or if there's something I'm missing from my understanding? Thank you.
Let me weigh on, weigh in on it, please.
Mr. Moderator, through you. That is a correct understanding. Acquisition can be, of property can be done in several ways. And there are two different types of takings. One is a taking that is against the will of the property owner for a governmental purpose, for which an offer must be made in terms of damages and is a much more complicated process. The other is, as you indicated, a kind of friendly action between two parties that eliminates risk to the town and to the other party concerning any potential title issues. It is something that is very common, not only here in, in Stoughton, but throughout the Commonwealth. And it is one of the tools that a municipality has to limit risk.
Can you answer your question, Mr.?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Last one up is Peter Ventresco. Peter, you have to be brief because this is your second round. So go ahead, ask one question. Let's bring in Mr. Ventresco. Peter, can you unmute yourself, please? Then state your name and precinct number. Peter, you have been brought in. Just state your name and precinct number, please. Unmute yourself. Should be at the bottom of your screen to unmute. Peter, a couple more seconds and I'm gonna move on. Try to unmute yourself. All right. Okay, we're gonna move on. I think we have a few more people, second round, but we're gonna have to end this at some point and get into pro and con debate. All right. Sandra Souza? Let's bring in Sandra.
Sandra Souza, precinct one. Just a quick question. I just want to make sure I heard that last answer about the wetlands correctly. Was that correct that four acres out of the eight and a half acres of the 400 Prospect Street property is wetlands?
Can anybody confirm that?
That's an approximate number. Yeah.
That is correct. That's a percentage. Okay, thank you. So that's, it's unusable, essentially.
Yes. Unusable, well. Cool. Sounds like what she was saying. Because there's plenty, yeah, there's plenty of land on the site for the building.
Okay. And that, that four acres is it? Okay, and that, that four acres is, that you're talking about is wetland. That's not, um, part of, um, it, it designated as wetland and not part of what would be considered, um, the, the stormwater, the drainage areas, stormwater management areas, I'm, I'm sorry.
Correct. You can't put stormwater management areas in the wetland areas.
Correct. So that, so, so there's the four acres of wetland, and then in addition, there would be more, uh, area, let's say carved out for that stormwater, um, management areas.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that I, I had heard that correctly. Thank you very much.
You all set?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right, last question is from Paul Demuse. Paul, just one question. This is the second go around for you. One question, please. Bring Paul into, Paul Demuse in.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Demuse, Precinct 3. I came in again because it's question time. I'll be back for the debate. Um, isn't IKEA coming off the tip and isn't there gonna be, I don't know, $800,000 a year available to the town that hasn't been here? And couldn't some of that money have been used towards this?
Uh, I'm gonna let Sue Herman answer that. She, she can cover this.
Um, the TIF money does come out of the, stops being paid into the infrastructure fund during fiscal '23, but it becomes part of the tax base. It's not considered new growth. So it becomes part of the whole tax base that can be raised two and a half percent. And IKEA is, has filed for abatements. I don't have, um, any information on when that's going to court or when that's gonna be decided, but I have figured that in an estimate for the commercial base change in '23.
And I think the clarification, it becomes part of that base, that doesn't mean we get more money.
Right.
It means it just offsets the residential obligation. So we don't gain that money in actual cash. It just becomes part of the general, because remember, the two and a half is on the total revenue we have coming in, the total tax revenue. So when that money turns into tax revenue, theoretically, the, the, everybody else pays a tiny bit less to offset the money that comes in. Two and a half is on the total amount. So we don't gain extra money, if you will, from the TIF coming off and paying into the base.
When that money comes in, the shift actually works a little bit in favor of the residential portion of the tax base.
Of your general tax bill. Yeah, theoretically, it's minimal when you average it out over the town, over every residence. But theoretically, your taxes go down just a tiny bit on that 2.5 increase because there's a figure, there's another body absorbing some of it.
Thanks, both of you. That was a very good explanation.
You all set, Mr. Demuse?
I am, thank you.
We can move on. Okay, see, no more questions, technical questions. We're done with that period. We're gonna move into pro and con debate period. All right, first one up, I believe, Dave Laurie. Can we bring in David Laurie? This is pro and con debate.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I wanted to be recognized for, uh, offering a substitute motion.
All right. On the PowerPoint, I believe. Just one second, please. On the screen. Okay, this is your substitution motion on the screen.
Thank you. Okay, so would you like me to just go into it or?
One second, Dave. Hang on. I need to confirm what Town Council, hang on. Okay, Dave, I'm just gonna have Council weigh in to explain the process here. Go ahead, Town Council.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. At this point, uh, we have a substitute motion that is pending, and it essentially replaces the motion that was in the FINCOM's, um, uh, book. The amendment that's being made here is an amendment to the FINCOM's, um, motion in the book. And so it would be my recommendation that you consider at least dealing with the first motion, which is the substitute motion to authorize the borrowing and providing that additional information about the, um, use of CPC money so as to not preclude the potential use of that money in the future. And then, once that motion has been acted on, you could come back to this one and vote on the proposition two and a half issues.
For Town Council, one minute, please.
Mr. Moderator?
Bob? One minute, please. I'll, 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 uh, call on you in one second. God, excuse me. Did you have a point of order?
Yes, I did, Mr. Mullin, sir.
Go ahead.
Normally, we should have voted on that motion right out of the gate, right at the beginning, so that all the conversation we had was focused on the new amendment. Then this would have come up and this would have either got voted up or down or whatever. I think in the future, that if we're gonna have a, an amendment to the immediate motion, let's take care of it right out of the gate. Now we're gonna have to go back, do it again. No disrespect to you, I understand, but it should have been handled right out of the gate. I wanted to say that, but, you know, Town Council went one way, now we're going back the other way because we see another motion. We would have had the other one out of the way. In this one here, people would have understood what's going on. Now we gotta read the other one again to make sure that people understand the other one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara. So we gotta, by the ruling of Town Council, I'm gonna agree with her that we have to take care of the, the prior amended motion first before we rule on this one. All right, so we're gonna go back to the prior one. All right. Okay, uh, can we clear the hands? I see some hands up, but those are probably from prior. One second, please. Okay, I'm referring Town Council again. Um, we're gonna have to take care of this amended motion first. So we're entering pro and con debate, um, at this time. And then after...
Mr. Moderator.
Who's, who's speaking right now?
This is Vaughn.
Okay, Vaughn O'Keane, go ahead. You have a point of order?
I have a point of information.
Yeah.
I believe it was just said that this, um, new motion would replace a finance committee motion. I just want to be clear that this new substitute motion is not from the finance committee. Neither is the other substitute motion. The finance committee voted this article down, so we did not have a motion. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Keane. That's clear. Thank you. Uh, Deborah Roberts, you have your hand raised?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mullin, point of clarification is this amendment that we're looking at is that the funding source 3565 split because I don't see that anywhere in the language. And I just wanted to be sure what we're voting on.
Okay, good question. Uh, don't, I don't have an answer for you. Let me see if I get it through Town Council. Move the screen. How do I move? I don't move the screen. We're just getting some clarification here.
Thank you very much.
This is the right one. Okay, the one that you see on the screen is the correct one.
No.
No? All right, we just got some PowerPoint issue here. Hang on a minute, everybody.
Yeah, no, I, I read a motion that referenced 6535 tonight.
Okay, we're gonna find that for you.
Yeah.
Bob, I think the problem is you can't see the whole motion on one screen. It's in peace.
Right, see, if you, if you look at the end, it says by the election of, and then it ends. There's a remainder of that.
Right, I'll try to get that moving toward on the screen. Just bear with me for a moment. I don't have access to the PowerPoint, so just hang on.
I have a point of order, Bob.
I was asked to wait a minute, so let's wait a minute. We have a technical issue here. Bear with us. Looking for the right motion to appear on the screen. Bear with us for a moment. Hang on a minute. All right, the explanation is the motion itself was too large to put on one slide to be able to read it on the screens. So can we, can we move it to the next page or on the next slide so everybody can? All right, can you tell them? Okay, uh, while we're trying to resolve this issue, who's, uh, who's up to point of order?
She's gonna type it in because it's wrong, she says.
Dave Laurie, you have a point of order?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I think I'm still off mute. Um, the pro con debate, I'm, I'm, I'd like to understand that it's gonna be limited and narrow, narrowly focused on the changes to the, to the motion because the full, you know, the full scope of the whole article that you want to have pro con debate on seems to be premature if we're gonna have my substitute motion considered. So are you gonna limit the pro con debate to the changes so we could vote those in or, or out before going into the broader article pro con debate?
Let me wait with Town Council. Can you ask a question one more time?
Yeah, it, it seems to me that you would wanna limit the pro con debate on just the portion of what's going on to make a change to the original motion because if we go into the broader pro con debate of the entire article, it seems like that would be premature because then I didn't, I didn't get the substitute motion put in at the right time. So are you gonna limit the scope of the pro con debate to just the changes so we can get that out of the way and move on to the rest of the article?
Okay, uh, hang on one minute. What? Okay, we have a point of order for us before we deal with everything. I have Dave Laurie here first. I could, need to resolve. Dave, what we're gonna do is we're gonna deal with this amended motion first. And, uh, then if this passes, that's it. If it doesn't pass, then we deal with yours. Just a little fence that we're gonna work with.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Uh, not to throw more curveballs, can you pull up that, my original motion, my, my amended motion? There isn't typo. Wait a second. It's not there. It says debt. Okay, it's fine. Debt exclusion question. Okay, that's fine.
Lauren, can you, um, take a look at this? Issues that were coming on. We have some resolution here. Move forward. Gonna have town council weigh in for us?
Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I know that procedural issues are not everybody's favorite, but essentially what we have right now is Mr. Laurie's substitute motion amends the original motion, not the finance committee's motion, but the motion printed in the book. And so the, the motion that's been made in the meantime is suggesting different language. And so what the moderator has, has proposed is essentially debate, is essentially the following. Debate on the first motion, Robin's, the town manager's motion. Then a vote on whether to adopt, adopt that language. That would be by majority vote. Then, the next thing that would happen would be Mr. Laurie's amendment would be on the floor. That would be discussed. And if Mr. Laurie would like to, let's say, i- if, if the town manager's motion passes, he could delete that same language in the amended motion. If he, if it fails, then he would bring his motion to the floor based on exactly how it's written right now.
Gonna proceed. Do we have a point of order, Mr. Dominion? What is, what's this one here? Well, I think town council just explained it. With this, okay. Mr. You, you, you have a point of order? I also see Margaret Seawick's hand up, too. Is that a list for what? Okay, gotcha. All right, let's bring in Eric Coleman, just to hear from him if he has a point of order. He is.
Can you, I'm sorry, was that coming through?
Go ahead, Eric.
Eric Coleman, precinct five. I had a point of order, but the town council had a good solution, so I withdraw my point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Okay, so this is what we're gonna do per town council's recommendation. She waited on it. We're gonna go ahead and discuss Dr. Grimm's motion on the floor right now. If that, we'll vote it up or down after we do the debate on it. And then Mr. Laurie's motion. Okay? That's all I wanna proceed here. All right, just to kinda move forward. What's the screen? I'm just trying. Is Grimm's motion on the screen now? Okay, now we're gonna enter the pro and con debate. Is Mr. Cohen up for us? Mark? Okay, let's bring in Robert Cohen. This is pro and con debate.
Robert Cohen, precinct five. Forty-two years I've been waiting for a fire station. We're that close. We're arguing, we're arguing over nothing. Let's vote this thing and get the goddamn thing done.
Excuse me, Mr. Cohen, please watch the language.
Oh, I'm sorry. But it's frustrating, Bob. It's frustrating to come to a meeting and hear all this and delays and this and that. Let's vote it and get it done with already. The guys deserve to live in a humane environment. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Next up?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I have a point of order from Joe Scardino.
Okay, we have a point of order from Joseph Scardino. Let's bring in Mr. Scardino. Joseph, when you brought in, please state your name and precinct number.
Joe Scardino, precinct one. I'm a little confused as to the effect of either a positive, a positive motion on the town manager's motion, what the effect of that is. Are we approving the, the substantive article with less than a two-thirds vote? So I, I think that point needs to be cleared up. I'm sure other people have the same concerns.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll have town council weigh in.
Joe, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, through you. So the way we have been proceeding throughout this discussion is that the substitute motion is basically an amendment to the original motion that was printed in the book. And then an amendment requires a majority vote to be approved. It does not approve the underlying motion as, I mean, main motion as amended. So essentially, if the, if the vote, I mean, if the motion that Dr. Grimm made becomes the main motion, then we'll have another amendment to consider, and that would either go up or down. And then we will have an amended main motion that is or is not amended, and that will be what requires a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Just, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead, Mr. Scardino.
My, my point is that I believe Mr. Laurie's motion was on the table prior to this meeting. Am I correct, Mr. Moderator?
Was on the table prior to the meeting?
Yes, on the virtual table.
It was on the virtual table.
Okay. So my point here is that when you have conflicting motions at the get-go, those should have all been resolved upfront and addressed at that point. The confusion is setting in because now, after the horse is out of the barn, and it's replicated three fillies, now we're trying to go back and put the horse, the filly back in the horse and the horse back in the stable. And if we had, we had addressed all the, all the competing motions at the appropriate time in the beginning, not motions that come up during the meeting, but motions that the moderator was, was clearly aware of, and so was counsel, should have been dealt with at the front. That's the problem for all the confusion. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Moderator.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Scardino, for your comments. Walsh, you have a point of order?
No.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna proceed with Dr. Grimm's motion that's currently on, on the floor. Okay, this is pro and con debate. Sandra Souzer, you're up for us? Can we bring in Sandra Souzer?
Hello, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I hear you. Go ahead.
So are we back, we're back to the beginning again?
We're back to discussing Dr. Grimm's motion.
Okay, um, so my question was based on, I'm sorry, I wasn't ready to go back that quickly, but so my question was based on the original three properties. And I wanted to ask Dr., through you, to Dr. Grimm, why, why was this particular property chosen over the Park Street property? I am one hundred percent in favor of the fire department getting a new station. I think their conditions are atrocious that they have to work, work under. So that, for me, that's not an issue. My concern is the site itself. And so, so I'm just wondering if perhaps there was another, you know, another viable option, and why, why this site over the, say, the, the Park Street site? If someone answered that.
I have a question. Wait a minute, Dr. Grimm, does anyone have questions or over? We're going pro, pro and con debate now? Sandra, did you want to, did you ask your questions before, right?
Oh, I thought I couldn't ask that question before.
Well, I thought you did. We brought you back in to ask questions. I'm a little confused on what you're asking now.
All right, so I can't ask about the, the other site?
No, not at this point.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay. Did, did you want to have any pro and con debate on this, Sandra?
Yeah, I guess I'm just concerned about, about the, the amount of wetlands in this particular site. And maybe I can rephrase that then. I'm concerned about the amount of wetlands in the site. And, you know, and, and maybe one of the other sites had more usable land to it. Because I know there was a question about a potential expansion in the future, but it just seems to me that this particular site has many issues between wetlands and then some other issues that have been talked about tonight. And I would like it to be the most appropriate site for, for this project because I think that they really need, they really need to have a building and facilities that will meet their needs, not just for now, but into the future. And this is a lot of money to spend. So I'd really like to make it, you know, the type of facility that will meet their needs for a long term.
Okay, you all set?
Yeah, I guess so, since I can't get that other question answered. All right, thank you.
Dave Laurie, did you have a point of order?
Well, my point of order was brought up and answered by town council. Remember when we, that was it, when I brought it up. Yeah, we're good.
Oh, you all set then?
I was all set with that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, I also have, we received an email from John Anzavino early on to speak on this article. Can we bring in John Anzavino? Actually, you're on the panel. Mr. Anzavino, go ahead, state your name and precinct number.
Yes, John Anzavino, precinct four. And I, I just wanna be clear here, Bob, because I think things have really got kinda muddled. We're only, we're only discussing now whether we want to vote on this particular amended motion, that this would become the main motion. If it becomes the main motion, I assume you're gonna be doing a debate on that as well, because you had your discussion. Are you gonna be doing a, a debate on the article itself? Or is now the time to make any pro-con on the article as a whole, regardless that it's, this is, just for the amendment here? Do you know what I'm saying?
One second, John. Yeah, for clarity sakes, we can talk about a little bit of Mr. Laurie's article. He wants to take out the debt exclusion. We can combine the discussion on both of these, you know, Dr. Grimm's.
So this would be the time for the pro-con?
Yes.
For the article as a whole, period?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Just so we won't have to re, re, you know, rego over again.
I just wanted to be sure.
Right, thank you, John.
All right, so with that, and I, because I know we're limited here, but I'll start with, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the amended motion. Number one, I don't think it was put out there in a timely fashion for all of town meeting to see. I think with the, the number of items that have been added in here, which you can see with all the red, is a lot different than what was available to everybody at the public hearing. So none of this was actually in there when, when the standing committees were hearing it, and I don't think that's fair. Number, and the project specific, this specific project has not really been out for public vetting and so forth. And they'll mention the August third meeting and a couple of board meetings, but it was never really put out there for this specific project as far as for getting public input. And I, I don't think that works too well from what we've seen in the past. It's, just the article itself, there's no doubt we need, need a new fire station, but that's not to say you take, eh, this isn't really that good, but we gotta do something. What we really should be doing is what's right. I do have a problem that there is a complaint that was filed against the person who sold this property to the current owner. And that investigation's been going on for a few months. That's a concern for me. There was another concern that was raised, you know, as far as the way it's bundled. You're doing three separate projects, but none of that is defined in the motion. So I don't care what you've discussed or what's out here for this, that, or the other thing. It's the motion you're voting. There's nothing in here that, that spells out how much would be spent, for what phase, when the phase would be done, or how the thing would be broken out. And frankly, for something that's so important, I agree with the previous speaker, this is put together very poorly for something that's so important. And the three projects should have been specified exactly what they were looking at money-wise. Because if you appropriate the funds and you go to build the firehouse and you have issues, you can spend all the money on that first phase and you won't have anything left for the other two. And that's a concern to me. You know, it, it just, like I say, for something that was, is so important, and it is very important, it just doesn't seem like the time and effort was put in to present this article properly for town meeting. I mean, this article was inserted not even following the board's own rules to have everything up front so you could make a fair vote. We didn't even have the appraisal when we were going through this. And the funny thing is, the appraisal is dated November first. Our hearing was November fourth, and we had asked about it. They said it wasn't in yet. There was another Zoom meeting just on the financing on the eighteenth of November, and it was asked a question about the appraisal. Or it's not done yet. And we got it right before the holiday weekend. It got sent out to the finance committee. I don't know why it was withheld if it was actually done on the first, but I'm just very concerned with, and the appraisal itself, I don't know about you, but I'm aware of two towns they used as comparables. And I can tell you, I don't believe Stoughton would be comparable for land property when you look at Needham or Marlborough. I don't think that's true. And the appraiser also said.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you so much for your comments. Appreciate it.
I, I have just one quick thing on the appraisal, Bob.
John, let's, we move on. You can come back at the end if there's time, time allotted. Thank you very much. Karen Clip is, she sent an email before. Karen?
Karen Clip, precinct six. I agree with the two previous speakers. I've been advocating for a new fire station for these outstanding employees of our community. They've responded to my residents a number of times and saved my life. And I'll tell you right now, they deserve better than what we're giving them right now. Please, let's get this figured out, and let's get them the goddamn fire station they deserve.
Lauren, you all set? Thank you for your comments. Point of personal privilege from Joseph McCrisky. Select would, Joe, five minutes. You have to unmute yourself, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I apologize, my mic wasn't on. I don't, I don't need five minutes. Town meeting members will hear a lot of opinion coming from certain members of standing committees and on how it wasn't vetted or it wasn't explained properly. There was a, a meeting held on a Thursday night where the finance committee met, and all these department heads that are here tonight were at that meeting as well to answer every question that was needed to be answered at the time by all the department heads and the finance team. Only after that meeting was closed to the public and the department heads went home, did the members of the finance committee meet again and basically brought up a whole new line of questioning without the same directors there and staff there or the consultants to address those questions. And anybody that was at And anybody that was at the meeting will see that the, a lot of the members had positive comments, there were good questions that were asked, and there seemed to be a lot of support that night with people stating they were in favor of the project. Only after a few minority members, you know, got into a lot of other questions and about some lawsuit that may or may not be going on, it's obvious that there is an investigation going on, but again, doesn't involve anybody that would stop us from moving forward. So I hope that town meeting members will listen, listen to the information that's been presented to you. All of our department heads have made good recommendations on why it was bundled. It's bundled and it's been said over and over because one project can't stand alone. There have been other projects that have spent millions of dollars in that were bundled as well. And, and work was done at another location because it was needed as part of that project as well. So this is nothing that the town of Stoughton has not done before. And again, I've been on the board just for serving my 18th year, and this isn't the first time that we've talked about the need of a fire station. And it goes back into the, the late 80s as well, but it was definitely very well talked about in the early 90s when I first got on the board. And, and this is how, you know, sometimes we just keep going and going, and we try to do and make everything as perfect as everybody. You have to get to the point where we look at what's good for the town and not good for the opinion of a few who think they know more than the people, the paid staff that we as the residents of Stoughton pay for their guidance. I would ask town meeting representatives to please support this article. Let's give our residents the fire department they need. Let's use this to give our firefighters the tools they need to do the job to serve us as the residents of Stoughton in the utmost highest level of firefighting expertise. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. McCrisky, is Pat Colburn? Can we bring in Pat Colburn? We heard Karen Clip.
Hi, this is Pat Colburn from precinct four.
Yes, Pat.
First, I, I just want to give a little needle and say that this, we, we want a fire station that is good for both men and women of the town's fire department to work. Secondly, I, I don't like the change in the wording due to the museum quality bay for the antique fire truck, because it's my understanding from last town meeting that the town does not own that fire truck. And if I'm mistaken, please correct me, but I hate to see us spend money on a fire truck we don't own. I wouldn't want to scuttle the whole article over that, though. I, I truly believe that nothing is going to be perfect. There will be no perfect solution. Anything we've ever tried to submit before town meeting before has also gone up in flames. The, the three-prong approach is very logical to me. I think it's important that we handle the fire needs, the administrative needs, the emergency needs, and I do believe this addresses this. So I am going to have faith in that building committee, that they're not going to blow all the money on the first part and not leave anything left. And I guess my only last comment, Mr. Moderator, and I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I would like to hear more from Mr. Laurie on his substitute motion as to why he wants to eliminate the voters from this process and put it all onto the tax levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat, for your comments. Next up is Steve Kaby.
Well, wait a minute, we jumped ahead. It's hard to get up here. Paul Demus, see what Matthew, Paul Demus is up front.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Demus, precinct three. I, I feel this is a good location. The, the concern about wetlands, the, a big chunk of the so-called wetlands are in the 100-year flood zone. We recently had a 100-year storm, by the way, and there was no flooding down there or anything like that. Those 100-year zones now are very, very conservative, and from what I understand, if you go to the state, you can have it looked at and say, yeah, that's really, you can bring those lines in closer and so on. So I don't have a concern with that. The oil tank is actually above grade. It's between the foundation and a retaining wall, and it's surrounded by earth. So it's kind of in its own little secluded area, so if there is an issue there, it hasn't gone down deep because it's still basically above the finished grade of the property. I do have some issues that a couple of previous speakers brought up about the procedures of these motions and so on, which I kind of feel we should have, we should put that to bed, but I don't know if it's, the horse is out of the barn, as someone said, and now it's too late to, to do that. But the, the debt exclusion, of course, nobody's all for that. And, you know, it's just too bad that the majority of our budget money goes to salaries, healthcare, and pensions, so that there isn't any money left to do capital projects. So this really isn't a big hit to get something that we really need. When some of the other projects come down the road, I think a lot more people are going to be fighting against debt exclusions. Thank you.
Mr. Demus, at this point in time, the moderator's going to take his discretion. We have a resident that wants to call in, and we're going to let him talk for a couple of minutes. Mr. Greg, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. I need your name and address, please.
Sure, Greg, I'm Paul Cracker, and I'm in precinct two on Prospect Street.
What's your, what's your address, sir?
318 Prospect.
Sure, go right ahead.
So, I thought it was important for you to hear from someone, you know, that's close to this project, living close to this project, expressed my concerns to not only the town manager, but also Mr. George Stolinski, the chairman of my precinct, also the fire chief, who I also spoke with. And as, as someone living on Prospect Street, I was not notified of this, which, which I was surprised by that, so that was a little bit disappointing. Lots of concerns about this site. Number one, you're putting essentially a commercial enterprise into the backyards of approximately 10 homes. You're putting it up a hill, you're putting it in the woods, you're putting it in the middle of a wetland. Fifty-four percent of that property is unusable wetland, so the, the town is eyeing essentially four acres worth of unusable property. I think that might be better spent, I'm square. And I am confused by these motions. I would have thought that all of this would have been worked out prior to today's meeting to try to get town council members to understand all the legal jargon and implications is a little bit daunting. If, if it was clear and unamended, without changes, it might be a little bit easier to answer questions, but now we're juggling in between various motions, and that is confusing. So, again, I, I fully support a, a fire station for our town if you need it, for sure. And I do not think this is the best site for it, in the backyard of approximately 10 homes. I do worry about the eminent domain lingo there that makes me feel that they are ready to acquire properties adjacent to this, to either expand the access point to the property. And in terms of flooding, people are saying flooding is not a problem. Let me tell you, the Prospect Street flooding is an issue. If you think that it is not, then you will be surprised, and I wonder how much money from this project.
Set, sir?
Nope, and also, in considering alternate sites, it's approximately 40 acres off of Park Street, and I'm wondering why that was not looked at closer than this site, which was an open to site.
Okay, you just have, you got a minute left, sir? Go ahead.
Yes, I am curious why the 40 acres off of Park Street was not considered as an alternate site for this project.
Okay, that's about wraps up. Very much for your comments, sir. Appreciate it.
I can give you an answer to my question.
Why it wasn't the 40 acres?
Correct.
Mr. Moderator, if you'd like me to answer that?
Sure. Good grammar.
So that 40 acres was actually considered for months and months, and there was a lot of discussion on it, but that land was donated to the town for school purposes. There was a lot of legal debate as to whether that could be overturned or not overturned, but the reality is that that property was donated to the town for educational purposes, and a fire station would not qualify.
Okay, there's your answer, sir.
Yes, I'm still waiting for the answer from Dr. Grimm.
You couldn't, can you hear that?
Yes, so I could partially hear it because it's a very difficult connection here. I just wanted to basically express that I have talked to none residents of Prospect Street that support this project, so I know there's other comments saying that this has support from Prospect Street, and I can assure you that there's not.
Okay, very much, sir. We're going to move on. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Who's up next? Hang on a minute.
Just have a point of information I'd like to clarify.
What, or information, Vaughn?
Excuse me?
You have a point of order?
I just want to clarify a statement that was made, if that's okay?
Sure, go ahead, Vaughn.
Thank you very much. A previous speaker had said that the finance committee, I don't want to get in a bunch of back and forth, but a previous speaker had said that the finance committee had hearings and then voted with no department heads around. That's not true. Finance committee held a public hearing on this article on November 4th. The public hearing was closed the end of that night, and then on November 8th, we held the votes for all of the articles contained in this warrant. On November 8th, the fire chief was in attendance at that meeting. I just wanted to clarify the statement. The statement that we had some secret meeting is, is not true, but thank you very much for the opportunity to clear this up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anokian. All right, next up is Margaret Swift. Can we bring in Margaret? Just unmute yourself, please. This is on pro and con debate. Can you unmute yourself? And you go ahead and start talking.
I don't know how that happened, I didn't put my hand up.
Okay, no, no problem, Margaret. No problem. Next up is Cynthia Walsh. Cynthia, just name and precinct number.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct two. I think, I don't read minds, but it seems the majority of the body is in favor of a fire station. I think, as a previous speaker said, we should be discussing the financing. I don't like going for another debt exclusion, especially since people are going to get wopped, walloped, when they get their tax bill, because their average bill is going to go up 4.4%, not 2.5%. So you ask those same people to put more money on top of that, you're just not going to get enough yeses. I think we should hear out Mr. Laurie's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Okay, who's up next, Mark? Steve Kaby? State your name and precinct number, Steve.
Sure, Steve Kaby, precinct one. I'm also a select board member. You know, I, I say a lot of these things before, I think a lot of people have as well. It, it is not surprising, but also somewhat concerning that, that for, for men and women who are willing to risk their lives for our safety, we have a difficulty with, with the idea of, you know, paying $20 extra every three months. This is, I've, I've worked on a couple of different plans now to, to have a fire station, to have a new fire station for this town. This is the, is the second or third. It's the best that I, I've ever seen. It's, it's excellent. It really provides, it covers a lot of ground. It covers, provides a facility that we can build affordably, gives us the headquarters with the space that we, we will need. And, you know, were there anything else? What, what, you know, these aren't the Keystone Cops, they're working out of a 100-year-old building, and they can't have, we cannot even, you know, fit like modern equipment into this building. And in order to do it, everything's got to be stacked on top of each other. You know, we saw that in some of the videos. I was there in person a couple of months ago, and, you know, everything's right on top of, of everything else, right? So we come out, as somebody mentioned, or the officers, or firefighters mentioned, they, they bring in, 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 after a fire, they're going to bring into their building, this tiny little building from 100 years ago, all the, all the cancer-causing chemicals that are present in fires. And it's just going to, it goes everywhere, right? They, they certainly have some procedures to, to contain it, but it's a 100-year-old building. It, this, it's, the, the conditions that we're asking them to, to work in are not appropriate for the 21st century at all. And, you know, people who are willing to risk their lives for us, I really, I've said it before, I'll say it again, we have to do, in this case, the bare minimum for them, which is provide them with a facility that is adequate for the job that they're trying to do on our behalf. So, you know, I do ask that you support this. If this doesn't pass, and, you know, there's, is talk of an additional amendment to this that would strip out any language about debt exclusion. If, if that happens, obviously all this is coming out of the operating budget, which, you know, I question whether or not that's, that can even be done without crippling our government as well. I think the language as Dr. Grimm has, has presented the, her motion, is as good as it's going to get. It, it covers a lot of ground, and I hope that Kathy is supporting this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kaby, next up, Dr. Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I wanted to confirm, earlier you had said we were having a pro and con discussion on both motions, Dr. Grimm's and Mr. Laurie's. Are we discussing both at the same time, or is this simply Dr. Grimm?
Yeah, in this discussion, yes. But we're going to, we will, let me just say, Dr. Rob, we'll vote them separately, but we'll, you know, discuss them here, right now.
In that case, I would like to take a moment and just discuss the impact on the school district if, in fact, Mr. Laurie's amendment would pass, with your permission.
Sure, go right ahead.
Thank you. And I did put a, a letter on the virtual table in this regard, but I think in terms of Mr. Laurie's proposed motion, should that pass, the school district is going to bear the majority of the additional $900,000 needed to fund the fire station completely out of the budget without a debt exclusion, as we've been talking about. And at this level, the school district would endure staff cuts in every building at every grade level. Fewer teachers result in higher class sizes. We have a typical, then higher kindergarten enrollment this year. We have increasing early childhood pre-K enrollment, and not only do we have higher numbers, but the students are coming to us with greater needs than we've ever seen. They're coming to us with language proficiency needs, as well as social emotional delays and academic deficiencies from the pandemic last year. All of these needs come with increasing demands for specialized staff and resources, as well as classroom teachers, and a cut like this couldn't come at a worse time. So I just wanted to make it clear that Mr. Laurie's proposed motion goes beyond simply avoiding a debt exclusion, but there's truly a large impact on the school district in the fact that we would have to cut back severely in our budget request for next year. So thank you for taking the time to listen, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Rob. Next up is Vaughn Anokian. Vaughn?
Mr. Moderator, I already spoke. I clarified some information. There's a lot of talk hits, and I thought about location and all that, too. Just for information, I, I can let everyone know that the location on Washington Street was discussed at the finance committee meetings, too. But earlier, I, my hand should already be down, I was just clarifying what a previous speaker had said was not accurate, but thank you very much for the opportunity. Thanks, bye-bye.
Thank you. Seen your hand up for a while. Did, well, you, did you want, do you have information, or you just want to talk? You, you spoke already? No, Carrara. Seen this up for, you know, for a while. Scott, did you want to? Okay, we're going to move on.
Vaughn?
Yes.
I could, I couldn't hear you, but now I can.
Good.
Um, I just, I just want to put something out there that we got to, we got we gotta, we gotta trust the chief and the assistant chief. They're the only two that have made sense of, uh, any one of these sites that has been chosen. I was very well happy with the Armory and it got turned down and noses turned up at it. And then I find out in an email that it was trying to be peddled to the, uh, the post office in a deal, but we'll let that go because that's dead now. But I just want to thank the fire chief and the assistant fire chief and, and all the men and women for putting up with this. They talked about response time. That's the important thing they were talking about. So, I understand why they looked at this location. Is it my favorite? No. Do I think there's gonna be problems later? Absolutely. But I'm gonna tell you something else. Nobody had a problem with response time when they were gonna put the Taj Mahal across the street from the Armory in the woods. These gentlemen put themselves out there and explained to us about the response time, but everybody was all on board to put it in the woods over there for 37 or actually it was 50-something million dollars. So, figure the savings that's staring us in the face now because they stood up and they knew their job. I was very upset that nobody was worried about response time because they saw, oh boy, new building, we're all on board. And now, we have a site that they say fits their needs and they're gonna have to live with it. It's what they want. It's what they're gonna get if this town goes for it. That's what happened on Central Street. We want it, we want it. It's been nothing but a problem since the day I stood there and saw them break ground. I hope when we break ground on the next one, I'm not standing there and then when I'm older going, jeez, I wish the hell they had listened and not gone here. But those two gentlemen, the firemen, they know what they're talking about. They, they explained it to me. I had to listen to them. They're the experts. Not all the rest of them. Mark Tisdale, another guy, adding all those kinds of stuff in that makes sense. And he, and he is a stormwater management guy, so you gotta, you gotta kind of listen to him. But we have to think about the residents, too, and how it's gonna be paid for. That's what I'm worried about. I want everything, I'm the what-if guy. When we go into this, make sure it's right. But I'm gonna say one thing. I looked at the facade of the new building and I'm not too happy with that. It's designed like something out of medieval times. Chain holding up things that are supposed to keep the snow and the rain out from in front of the doors, pulling on a brand-new building. Ridiculous. It's made out of brick. You're gonna have that, that iron in the walls and that stuff. You don't think it's gonna take weight? So, that's what I look at. But I have to listen to those two gentlemen and that's who we should listen to. They've been very quiet through this tonight and, uh, I have a lot of respect for those two guys. I have to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carrara. Next up is Eric Coleman. Can we bring in Eric Coleman?
Eric Coleman, precinct five. I move the question.
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, the question has been called. Move the question. We needed two-thirds of vote. Uh, Mr. Ms. Emman has a part of order?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, it was my understanding we were voting on the amended motion first before we move on, and then we would consider Mr. Lorie's amended motion if he still wished to move it forward. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We're just voting on this motion before us right now.
So, the amended motion requires, is it two-thirds or half? 50%?
Okay, so this just requires, well, first we gotta vote on calling the question, two-thirds vote.
Sure, sure.
And then we're gonna go back to this motion, which will be just a simple majority.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Right. All right, so this is just, uh, we needed two-thirds of vote, and it was seconded by Stephanie Carrara, uh, maybe Eric Coleman. Uh, okay, so can we clear the hands? Once we have the hands cleared. All right, uh, there was five people, but actually there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I just want everybody to know, as we mentioned before, last time around, last virtual meeting, there's eight people in line to speak right now. I think you saw all the, a lot of the hands raised. Those screens should be available to see at the time before I had, had the hands cleared. And we have a point of order by Dave Lorie. Can we bring in Mr. Dave Lorie?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Lorie, precinct six. Just, you mentioned that it's a two-thirds vote just to call the, just to call the vote and then we vote, uh, a majority for amend?
Okay, this is just to stop debate on this particular motion.
What, yeah, I didn't realize you need two-thirds to stop the debate.
Yeah, the move the question is two-thirds vote.
Two, thank you, okay.
You okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So, this is just-
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Were we debating on, well, both, wasn't the debate on both amendments at once? So, the moving of the question would be on both amendments, right?
No, this is just on this particular.
So, the debate was on both?
Well, the discussion was on, on both. Were they gonna vote them? We're gonna vote them separately. You're gonna have a chance to, uh, once we clear the, uh, the vote here, you can have a summary, five-minute summary before we actually take the vote. Okay, but the thing is, um, this is just to stop the debate on this particular article. Okay?
So, the comments on the other amendment-
Motion, this particular motion.
So, the comments on the other amendment would still be taken?
Yes.
Such as Dr. Rob, for example, there would be still comments on the other amendment?
Yes, he can. And I'm actually gonna hold off your summary till, uh, let's see where this article goes. Okay?
Mr. Mullins?
Yes, Deborah Roberts?
Hi, Deborah Roberts, precinct six and part of the select board. Oh, uh, point of clarification, if this article fails tonight, either are the original or the amended, do we have to wait two years before we bring it to town meeting again?
I will have town council weigh in on that because I'm not the lawyer. Yeah, but go ahead, town council.
Mr. Moderator, there is no two-year ban on borrowing articles, and so this could be brought back up again at any time.
Thank you, town council. All right, we gotta take the vote on ending debate on this, this one motion in front of you. All right? Um, I'm not a lawyer, so, I mean, if anybody wants to step in here today, come on up. I have no problem with that.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gito, do you have a point of order?
Uh, yes, I do. I have a, I, I thought that what we were trying to do was determine whether or not we were going to accept the, uh, new motion by Dr. Grimm over the original motion that was put on the table before.
Yes.
And that was going to be my majority vote. Then after that, I thought that what we were going to do was determine whether or not we wanted to deal with, uh, with Mr. Lorie's substitute motion.
You are correct.
And then I thought we were going to, after that was decided, we were going to then decide, uh, by a two-thirds vote, whether or not we wanted to pass something to have a new fire station.
You said it better, Mr. Gito. You said it very succinctly and clearly, obviously better than I could have. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that's what we're going, all we're doing right now is cutting off debate on the substitute motion to find out whether or not we wanted to use the substitute motion or the original motion. That's, that, so that will be a two-thirds vote and then we will have a simple majority vote, uh,
Here's the cut.
to determine the original versus the substitute.
Right. Uh, we're doing a two-thirds vote. It's just to cut off debate on this motion in front of us.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you are correct on that. We, we good on that?
As far as I'm concerned, as long as the next thing we do is do a majority vote to, uh, to then have the substitute motion or not, and then we go from there.
That's correct. Thank you. So, at the same time, let's clear the hands. This is just to cut off debate on this motion, the substitute motion in front of you. All right, I don't see any hands up. Trish, do I see any hands up? Okay, this is cut off debate. All those in favor are cutting off the, off debate. Go ahead, raise your hands. They're raising their hands. Go ahead and raise your hands. All right, do we, are we taking account? Yeah, more than that. Okay, you good? Okay. All right, let's clear the hands. Okay, we, we good? All those opposed, please raise your hand. Do we have a count? Okay, let's clear the hands. Clear the hands. Okay, I think I see the hands cleared, cleared. All those abstaining? Do we have a count on that? All right. Can the clerk now read the count, read the vote?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The vote is 103 yes, no 12, one abstention.
One abstention, so the vote is yes, 103 opposed, or I should say no 12 and abstentions one. Motion to cut off debate passes. All right, now. Yeah, I have town council weigh in one last time.
Mr. Moderator, so now you have in front of you, um, as do the, the, um, town representatives, town meeting representatives, the proposed motion that Dr. Grimm read at the beginning of this debate, and that is in front of you right now on your screens. This would be a majority vote and essentially if the, if the body votes yes, then this will become the new main motion. At that point, move to Dr. Lur, I mean, to Mr. Lorie's motion and thereafter, and that would also be a, a majority vote, and thereafter, to approve the main motion as amended or not, and that would be a two-thirds vote.
Okay, so this next thing is a simple majority vote on Dr. Grimm's motion.
Correct.
Okay, we have a point of order from Dave Lorie. Go ahead, David.
Dave Lorie, precinct six. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a quick question. If, if I'm in favor of the changes in red, but I'm against the, uh, override at the end of the motion, should I be voting in favor or against?
Uh, that's, I'm not gonna tell you how to vote.
In favor.
The point is, if I don't want the bottom sentence, but I like the changes in red.
Uh, I'll, let me have town council answer your question. Hang on one second, Dave. Go ahead, town council, weigh in, please.
Mr. Moderator, this language will not be part of the main motion unless this body votes in favor of this motion. Thereafter, the proposition two-and-a-half question that Dr. and that Mr. Lorie had raised can be considered. If the town votes, if the body votes no on this motion, then this language will not be before the body to be, um, considered by, uh, to be considered with Mr. Lorie's motion.
That, that answers perfectly. Thank you.
That, if, in here, the last comment? You okay? Okay, uh, Blacker, do you have a point of order? Jeff? Jeff Blacker? Oh, okay, put his hand up. We're ready to vote on the, on the proposed amendment motion in front of you. This is a simple majority. Okay, now should we try to put the poll up? Do we have a poll? Okay. We have, if we have a poll, we can, oh, we don't have a poll, we do hand vote.
Vaughn, just please clarify just what the voting is now. Thank you.
Are you, John?
I'm sorry.
You want clarification one more time? Okay, I might have town clerk clarify one more time.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome, John.
Mr. Moderator, through you. So, a motion was made to move the question. The main, I'm sorry, the amendment that was being considered, the substitute motion, is now what is the subject of the current vote. That is a, a majority vote. At that point, if it, if the motion becomes the, if this motion that's in front of you becomes the main motion, then Mr. Lorie can decide how he wants to make his motion to delete the, um, debt exclusion language. At that point, it's also a majority vote, and then we have to vote by a two-thirds vote to pass the main motion as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Ms. Goldberg.
Thank you, John. Uh, we're gonna, Trish is gonna try to put a poll up to make it easier. Here's the poll. This is the amendment by Robin Grimm that you see before you. All those in favor vote yes, those opposed vote no, and you can abstain. You have 25 seconds.
Mr. Moderator, Karen Clip, precinct six. I don't have a poll.
Okay, well, if you move your screen around. It's probably behind one of the screens. Can technical help assist Karen? Do you see it now?
No.
Can you text your vote so you don't have to say it on, in front of everybody here to, uh, town, town clerk Stephanie Carrara?
Okay.
You okay? We'll get that recorded. Okay, five more seconds. All right, let's end the poll. Okay. We're gonna, we're just waiting for, before we, before we do anything else, um, let's, we're waiting on Karen Clip to text her in. You get anything yet?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, just, Trish, just leave the poll as it is. Hang on one minute.
It's there now. Okay, no. She don't need my call. It doesn't matter.
Right. Okay. Okay. All right, uh, I'm gonna have the town clerk report the results.
Okay, on this vote, for the majority vote, it's yes 99, no 32, with four abstentions.
So, it does pass. Yes 99, simple majority, no 32, abstentions four. This is called the main motion. All right, now, we're gonna discuss Mr. Lorie's motion. All right, just making a note here.
Mr. Moderator, how long are we going to go on tonight?
As long as it takes, Mr. Gito.
Thank you.
All due respect.
It's just a question. I'm not...
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just a little, I don't mean to say it that way. You know, as long as we have to do this, we can just hopefully move it along a little bit. I'm sorry, Town Council, do you want to say something?
Mr. Moderator, where Mr. Lurie had indicated previously that he was in favor of the language in red, or someone had, that they were in favor of the language in red, and looking at the vote there, I'm wondering if Mr. Lurie wants to just remove the debt exclusion language as his motion from the main motion as amended rather than going back to the start?
Let's...
Mr. Moderator, I would just ask that anybody who doesn't have an immediate question put their hand down because I've got a number of hands up and I don't have any way of telling what it is they're looking to do.
You want me to have them clear their hands for us?
Yes, unless there's some...
Could everybody just clear their hands for the moment? Can we clear their hands? Yeah, we're just trying to start again here.
Do you want me to talk to Dave Lurie?
Yes, and Town Council's gonna make a discussion here with Lurie, Dave. Listen to Town Council for a minute. Go ahead, Town Council.
Thank you. So as I'd indicated, Mr. Lurie, this motion relates to the motion we have now replaced. And so my question is whether instead of moving this the way it's written, if you want to strike that same language instead from the main motion as amended.
Dave Lurie, you have your hand up? Dave? You have a point of order? Okay, Dave has his hand up for us. Can we bring in Dave Lurie?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Lurie, Precinct 6. Thank you, Town Council. It's exactly what I'd like to do. I like everything about the motion minus the deletion of the debt exclusion.
Okay, we're gonna just, we're just gonna take the main motion that was amended. They're gonna just quickly show that on the screen as you requested.
The one that you and I struggled with like the 19 times. Yeah.
Seth Paul, shall I recognize you for your point of order?
Mr. Moderator, this is becoming government by duress. You're just trying to wear us out. I...
I'm not trying to wear anybody out.
I adjourn until Wednesday at 7:00 PM.
I think we need to kind of conclude this.
Well, this is unfair to Minister Lurie for one person. It's a clear demonstration of bias in favor of the previous motion.
It is. Not for me. I'm just trying to, if you want to step in my seat right here, Cynthia, I don't want to argue with you. I apologize. Thank you for your comments. Is that a motion, Cynthia?
My motion is to adjourn until Wednesday at 7:00 PM and we can start with Mr. Lurie.
I will second that.
Second.
All right, who's that? Who seconded that person?
Ann Dolan. I seconded it.
Okay, Eric Anderson seconded it the first time. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, hang on. Eric Anderson. All right, and that was Cynthia to adjourn and to, you can stop on Wednesday at 7:00 PM by virtual Zoom webinar. All right. One moment, please. Hold by each department. Everybody's gonna get a new link for Wednesday night. So click on that and you don't have, you do not have to re-register. Just click on the link when you get it for Wednesday night. Okay? So we have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
A point of order, Bob, for John Anzavino? Can we make sure that we have the motion that we're gonna be looking at on Wednesday night on the table in time so we can actually look at it and maybe absorb what the real one is now?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your suggestion, John. And I also will try to mail it out to everybody in the morning. I know, for sure, everybody has it. It's been an exhausting night, but it's been a challenging night. All right, so there's a motion on the table to adjourn until Wednesday night at 7:00 and like Trish said, you can, she's gonna send out a link. You don't have to re-register. And the last thing is, you can log in early again. Please remember to read, check your emails. Okay, so we're gonna take the, for those in favor, I'm gonna just ask you to raise your hand. All those in favor to adjourn, raise your hand. Are we taking a count here? Are we good? Okay, clear the hands, please. Clear the hands.
I was a yes. I got you.
Were you a yes, Cynthia? Okay, we're gonna clear the hands.
Somehow, Rachel here has saved all my screen.
Wasn't me. All right, clear the hands. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Do we have a count? We good? I just want to make sure they agree. Okay, clear the hands, please. Clear the hands. All right, we have to take abstentions. Everybody doesn't want to say yes or no. Anybody abstaining? Raise your hand. All right. All right, we're gonna have the town clerk report the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Needs meeting.
So Wednesday at 7:00, the vote is yes 95, no 25, and one abstention.
Okay, we are now adjourned. It is, I have 11:12 PM. We'll see you back on Wednesday, December 8. Thank you all for your participation. Have a good night.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you. You're all welcome.
Thank you, Bob.
Sorry you're so long tonight. You're welcome. Have a good night, everybody.